Good evening. Welcome to this evening's Nuclear Regulatory Commission Public Meeting on Waste Confidence Draft Generic Environmental Impact Statement and Proposed Rule. My name is Miriam Juckitt, and I will be your facilitator for this evening's meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to go over just a few things that have to do with the process and the objectives so that everyone has a good idea of what to expect this evening. First of all, the objective for the NRC is to hear your comments and your recommendations on the draft generic environmental impact statement. We'll be calling that the GEIS during this meeting. And the staff will be here to hear your comments, and I'll be taking these comments back to consider in the finalization of the EIS. There are many ways to submit comments on this, and you'll hear about some of that in the presentations. But we want to make sure that everyone knows that whether you submit comments in writing or whether you submit comments by speaking them onto the record tonight, all of the comments will be considered the same, all of them will be considered equally. So we do want to make sure that we get your comments tonight for the NRC staff to consider. As far as the process for tonight's evening, this evening, we will be going through a couple of very brief presentations by a couple of NRC staff members, and then we'll go to a very short question and answer. We'll take two or three questions, and the main purpose of that is to make sure that everyone understands the process for finalization of the EIS, the schedule, things like that. But we'll just take only a couple of questions since the main portion of this evening's meeting is the comment portion, and that's where we'll open up the floor to people who have registered to speak and those who have logged up and said that they would like to speak. And we'll ask you to come and make your comments at the podium. Now, our court reporter over here, Ron, will be taking a transcript of this evening's proceedings, so you'll have a chance to speak your comments on the record for consideration. When we do go to the comment portion, what I'll be doing is calling everyone's name one by one, and I'll call two or three at a time, and if you could, make your way to the front, and we'll take a couple of seats here for people to get ready to go up to the podium. Because we do have so many people signed up to speak tonight, and we're very happy that we've got a great crowd out tonight, we'll ask everyone to stick to a three-minute limit. And my colleague, Pat Lepant, here, will be holding up a little sign to remind you when you're at one minute, and that way we kind of have an idea as how long your comment is going on and that you have one minute remaining. After that one minute, I'll give you a signal and let you know to wrap it up. So we do want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak tonight, so I'm sorry in advance if I have to cut you off and let you know that you've got three minutes left, but we do want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak. So with that, I just want to add a couple of other housekeeping items before we introduce tonight's speakers. You have a couple of forms that are on the chairs. If you didn't, we will be happy to provide you one. There's a feedback form that just lets us know how you felt about how tonight's meeting went, and you can either give it to any of the NRC staff who are here, or it's marked for you to be able to mail it in, post it through. We also have a few comment forms, so that as you're listening to the comments, and maybe you already spoke, or you think of something that you want to be able to say, you can write down your comments and give them to the NRC staff members, and we'll be happy to take those from you. The other thing is the restrooms are out the door to the left right back here, just in case. We'll probably take a quick break towards the middle depending on how the flow of the meeting is going and if we're getting everyone in to speak. So with that, I want to real quickly introduce to you the NRC staff members who are here today. We have Dr. Keith McConnell, who is the Director of the Waste Confidence Directorate. We have Paul Michalak, who is the Branch Chief in the Environmental Impact Statement Branch. We have Lisa London, who's from our Office of General Counsel, and we would be remiss in not acknowledging Susan Whitick and T.R. Riddle, who have done a lot of the logistics for this and really helped us out in getting to this, to be a nice meeting meeting. Also, I want to make sure to mention, you've probably got to speak with some of the folks that are out here from NRC. We are only taking questions that have to do with the process, but we've made this time available to you so that if you do have more technical comments or questions, I'm sorry, questions, that you want to go out and speak with someone about, you're welcome to at any time go talk to people out in the foyer, that's what they're there for. And we want to make sure that we keep the meeting mostly to comments, and that's why we're not going to be responding to what you say from the podium, it'll just be the comments. So with that, let's get started with our presentations, and Dr. Keith McConnell will give the first presentation.
Thanks, Miriam, and good evening, everyone. As Miriam indicated, I'm Keith McConnell, and I'm the Director of what's called Waste Confidence Directorate at the U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission. I want to welcome you here tonight to this appropriate meeting on the proposed rule called Waste Confidence. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to gather your comments on the draft generic environmental impact statement and proposed rule for the storage of spent nuclear fuel after the operating life of a power reactor and before it's disposed of in a geological facility, otherwise called the Waste Confidence Rule. These two documents, the draft generic environmental impact statement and the proposed rule, represent the culmination of the directorate's activities over the past year to respond to a U.S. Court of Appeals from the District of Columbia decision to vacate or void the 2010 version of the Waste Confidence Rule and remand it back to the NRC staff to fix certain deficiencies that relate to the impact analysis under the National Environmental Policy Act. Given that the purpose of tonight's meeting is to gather your comments on this draft generic environmental impact statement and proposed rule, and we, the NRC staff, intend to limit what we say so that we can maximize the opportunity for you all to provide us your comments. And it's our goal to stay here until we hear everyone that's signed up to speak. So we do encourage you to participate. As Miriam has indicated, we do have the technical staff back in the back of the room and out in the foyer, who have written the vast majority of the draft generic environmental impact statement. And I encourage you to take the opportunity to talk to those individuals, because they won't be considering your comments, and they will be writing the final draft of these two documents. I also would like to take a few minutes and talk about our rulemaking process. It's a very important part of what we do at the NRC. It's how we implement national policy and standards, and it's how we maintain and achieve the NRC's goals of maintaining public health and safety and security and protection of the environment. The meeting here tonight is a very important part of that process. We're here to gather and hear your comments, so again, we encourage you to participate. Tonight's meeting, which is one of the 13 interactions with the public, total interactions with the public that we're having during this public commentary, is just one of the efforts that we've undertaken to make this Waste Confidence Rule-making effort as open and transparent as possible. In that regard, we do appreciate those of you who participated in the SCOPI meetings that occurred last October and November, and also those of you that have followed along with Waste Confidence activities during our monthly public status calls. We do want to hear your comments. I would note that the five NRC commissioners, when they reviewed the draft generic environmental impact statement and proposed rule before it went out for public comment, specifically asked that the public comment on five particular questions, and they relate to the format and content of the Waste Confidence Rule. And those questions are out on the table, and then, so you can specifically pick them up and know what they are. But we encourage you to provide your comments on those questions. Those specific questions, as well as any generic comments you have, will help us improve the final documents, and will provide vital information to the commissioners when they consider our final documents, and how we've done, how well we've done, to respond to public comment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul Michalak, who will provide some brief introductory remarks.
Good evening. I'd like to add to Keith's welcome and thank you for participating today. My name is Paul Michalak, and I'm the Branch Chief of the Environmental Impact Statement Branch in the Waste Confidence Directorate. At tonight's meeting, I'll give a brief history of Waste Confidence, outline key aspects of the draft generic environmental impact statement and the proposed Waste Confidence Rule, and explain how you can comment on these documents. Then we'll go to the public comment portion of the meeting, which is written apart. Waste Confidence accomplishes two things. It generically addresses the environmental impacts of continued storage and makes a determination about the feasibility of safe storage and the timeframe for repository availability. The draft generic environmental impact statement for Waste Confidence satisfies part of the Commission's National Environmental Policy Act obligations for reactor licensing and relicensing, and the licensing and relicensing of spent fuel storage facilities. The draft environmental impact statement also serves as the regulatory basis to support this Waste Confidence Rule. The environmental impact statement and proposed rule only cover the timeframe after the licensed life for reactor operation. However, it is important to note that the proposed rule on Waste Confidence does not license any particular site or facility, nor does it allow for the long-term storage of spent nuclear fuel at any site. The NRC's history with Waste Confidence started when the Commission issued the rule back in 1984. Since then, the rule has been updated, most recently in 2010. In 2012, the rule was challenged, and the Court of Appeals for the D.C. Circuit vacated the 2010 rule. The court identified three deficiencies with the Commission's environmental analysis to support the 2010 Waste Confidence Rule. The court found that the analysis didn't evaluate the environmental effects of failing to secure permanent disposal of spent nuclear fuel. It also directed the Commission to provide a forward-looking assessment of spent fuel pool leaks and the environmental consequences of spent fuel pool fires. The court did conclude that a genetic approach, either with an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, would appropriately address the issues associated with Waste Confidence. Following the court's decision, the Commission directed the staff to prepare an environmental impact statement evaluating these issues with the possibility of issuing an updated Waste Confidence Rule. There are two things that I would like you to remember. The first is that Waste Confidence is just a small part of the overall environmental analysis for reactor or storage facility licensing and relicensing. Secondly, Waste Conference Rule does not license any facility or authorize storage at the expiration of a facility's license. The draft statement describes the impacts of continuing to store spent nuclear fuel beyond the licensed life for operation of a reactor, whether in a spent fuel pool or in an independent spent fuel storage installation located at both reactor and away from reactor site. The draft statement describes why we're revisiting Waste Confidence. It discusses the alternatives considered. It describes how the environmental impacts are evaluated. It describes what facilities are covered and the environmental impacts of continued storage at reactor sites and away from reactor sites. It also contains information on the cost of the alternatives to the rulemaking. It describes the cumulative environmental impacts of continued storage, and it contains information on the feasibility of a repository and the feasibility of safe storage of spent fuel. The draft statement assessed impacts of continued spent fuel storage for three timeframes based on when a repository will become available. We evaluated a short term, or 60 years beyond the licensed life for reactor operation timeframe. We also evaluated a long-term timeframe, which was 100 years beyond the short term, or 160 years. And then finally, there was an indefinite storage scenario where no repository becomes available. The draft statement serves as the regulatory basis for the proposed rule. The proposed rule would generically address the environmental impacts of continued storage. These impacts would not be revisited in future site-specific licensing proceedings unless the NRC discovers something about the site that would make the application of the conclusions in the environmental impact statement inappropriate. The proposed rule would revise the Nuclear Regulatory Commission's regulations, specifically the citation is Title 10 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Section 51, Rule 23. The proposed rule also states that the analysis supports the Commission's determinations that it is feasible to safely store spent nuclear fuel following the licensed life for operation of a reactor. It also states that it is feasible to add a mined geologic repository within 60 years following the licensed life for operation of a reactor. We are specifically seeking comment on whether the final rule sheet contained these last two statements. To ensure that your comments are considered, they must be received by December 20, 2013. Mailed comments must be postmarked by December 20. All comments, whether submitted in writing or provided orally, are considered equally. Of course, we're here tonight so you can tell us your comments on the generic environmental impact statement and the proposed rule. Tonight's comments are being transcribed and will become part of the record. You can also leave written comments with the NRC staff or agent at the registration table, and we will make sure that those comments are added for the recording. You may also email, fax, or mail your comments to the NRC. You may also provide comments using the federal heat rulemaking site, wwwregulations.gov. That concludes the presentation. I'll turn it over to the speaker.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to go very quickly to a couple of questions, or if people have one, but we're going to, okay, we've got our mic situation worked out. Are there any questions that anyone has regarding the schedule or the finalization of the rule? And could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, Jeffrey Schumpert is my name. Is there any possibility you could back this slide up one slide so we could see the exact text of what was just briefly described? It was only up there for a few seconds, so.
Certainly, I also want to make you aware that these slides are available outside too, if anybody would like a hard copy of the slides. Actually, give me that slide. Any other questions?
Will the docket be made public afterwards? I'm Mike with Chicago Independent Television. I was wondering if the official docket with all the public comments will be made available to the public or only viewable to the NRC?
Certainly, let me go ahead and get Keith McConnell to answer that question for you. The question was about whether or not all of the documents on the docket will be made public.
The question is yes, all of the documents will be made public, the comments will be public. There'll be a comment response section in the final generic environmental impact statement, and all of that information will be available on our website, the Waste Conference website.
Any final questions on process or schedule?
I was wondering, I'm sorry, I'm Tammy Thompson. I was wondering that the spent fuel that you're talking about, will this be coming from other facilities, traveling to the United States of Illinois to be stored here? Or is it the waste that's already at the facilities that are here?
Okay, we want to make sure that we're primarily concentrating on the process questions here, but we'll go ahead and take this one. This is Paul Michalak.
Hi, Paul Michalak. The fuel, the spent fuel that's considered in the environmental impact statement is from commercial reactors licensed by the United States. So the answer to the question is no, the fuel that we're considering is domestic commercial fuel. If the, in our state licensed the facility, that fuel is considered in generic environmental impact statement.
Sorry, but are we accepting fuel from other states into our state, or does our state stay here?
Yeah, this is Keith McConnell. In terms of the impacts analysis, the impacts analysis considered what's generated on site and which is stored on site.
Okay, and I'm sorry to cut this off, we have to make sure that we go ahead and get to the comment portion, but I do want to make sure that you know that we do have NRC folks available out in the lobby to speak with if you do have more questions. We'll also stick around afterwards so that you're welcome to come and ask these questions individually. So let's go ahead and move to the comment portion of the program. And when I call your name, please make your way up to the front. We've got a couple of chairs here for, if you care to wait up here, as opposed to your seat, if it's a little easier to get out. Please do state your name and affiliation if you can. And also, you need to make sure that, you know, everybody's got differences of opinions, and we'll hear of a wide variety of things today. We would really love it if you could be polite to each other, and we need to get a clean transcript for this evening's meeting. So one speaker at a time, and we'll go in the order that you're called. And also, if you didn't pre-register, we're still accepting comments, you're welcome to go ahead and speak. If you could sign in at the registration desk, or if you did pre-register and you didn't get a chance to check in at the pre-registration desk, that just helps us to know that you're here and you would still like to speak. So our first two speakers that I want to go to are Reed Wilson from the Office of Congressman Adam Kinzinger. And next, we'll go to Tom Wolfe.
Good evening, and Reed Wilson, Representative Congressman Adam Kinzinger, who represents the 16th District of Illinois. Dear Commissioners, we'll let Reed here. Thank you for allowing my office the opportunity to address this public meeting regarding Nuclear Regulatory Commission rulemaking to address Waste Confidence. As many homeless residents rely on nuclear for clean and affordable energy, this rulemaking will have an important impact on consumer across the state. In the 16th District alone, there are four nuclear power plants providing grid and price stability to consumers throughout our region. Nuclear power provides half of our state's energy and generates almost 93% of the carbon-free electricity produced in Illinois. Without the availability of this base load power, there's no doubt that prices would skyrocket and air stability would plummet. In addition, the nuclear industry supports thousands of high-paying jobs, which in turn supports a tax base of our local communities. We here today discuss Nuclear Regulatory Commission's proposed rule on Waste Confidence. The proposed rule simply clarifies the issues and processes surrounding a safe and secure storage of spent nuclear fuel. It's not authorized individual licenses, if this is only one step in the Commission's National Environmental Policy Act review. Enhancing the clarity of this policy will reach a more efficient licensing process, which will benefit consumers throughout our region. In addition, the NRC's rulemaking process is a kind of open and transparent process that should take place in all aspects of government regulation. There's been widespread participation of all aspects of government, industry, and the public in order to ensure that all viewpoints are considered. A total of 12 public meetings will take place, and members of the public will have the opportunity to submit comments to the Commission through December 20 to 2013. Finally, completion of this process is my hope that the NRC will complete this rulemaking in expeditious manner. Lastly, I want to touch on the fact that Nuclear Regulatory Commission has suspended all final licensing decisions while this rulemaking process moves forward. I believe it's time to provide, this industry, which provides a clean source of energy to millions of consumers, the ability to move forward at a greater level serving for the long-term operations, sincerely, Adam Kinzinger, member of Congress.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Tom Wolfe.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Tom Wolfe, I'm the Executive Director of the Energy Council at the Illinois Chamber of Commerce and a proud member of the Illinois Clean Energy Coalition. It's clear from our overall quality of life, as well as our overall economic well-being, that we need a reliable, cost-competitive, diverse, and safe supply of energy. In the past few months, I've been to public hearings on license extensions for nuclear power plants, U.S. EPA regulations on emissions from coal plants, regulations on hydraulic fracturing in Illinois, and permitting for new transmission lines that would bring more wind energy to Illinois. Every single energy project that I was at, for these meetings, had its detractors at these meetings, yet no one has come to the energy hearings with the perfect solution. Just reasons why the current system isn't perfect. Well, of course, it's not perfect. Everyone in this room knows that there's no perfect form of energy. If there was one, believe me, we've been using it. So we're stuck with an abundance of imperfect choices, but we've done pretty well with these, and I want to thank the NRC, AHEMA, and AHEMA for working with the owners of our nuclear facilities to keep the onsite storage of spent nuclear fuel safe, and it is safe. Our lucky scenarios that are designed to scare people or grab headlines are not productive in this discussion, nor to our energy debate in general. Opponents of nuclear energy paint a picture of piles of growing, of galling waste, sitting out in the open air, open air poisoning the air, or implying that they're easy targets. All this hyperbolic hot air just obscures the fact that there has never been a single incident where spent nuclear fuel storage has been compromised by any outside individual or group. They've been safely stored for decades, and I believe the NRC and AHEMA are the owners of nuclear plants to keep it that way for decades to come. Of all the reasons people get for wanting to move away from Illinois, I can say that no one has ever talked to the chamber about the stored nuclear waste is the reason of the problem in the state. The tax structure, the pension problem, the high worker discount rates, destructive attitudes at Springfield, no one's the radioactive issues that keep businesses coming to or growing in our state. In conclusion, we certainly hope that the federal government will meet its long overdue obligation, and will soon figure out a solution to the long-term storage of spent nuclear fuel. But until then, we are happy that the industry, as federal and state regulators, have determined a strategy that works at many levels, but most important of those is our safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, let's go to David Kraft. And then let's go to Scott Fleming, and then S.Y. Chen.
Good evening. My name is Dave Kraft, I'm Director of Nuclear Energy Information Service. We're an environmentally safe energy advocacy organization based in Chicago, Illinois. We represent nearly 900 supporters in Illinois, 34 states, and four countries, and we thank the Commission for allowing us the three minutes of meaningful comments on a problem destined to haunt humankind for tens of thousands of years. We hope we've demonstrated that the people of Illinois, while not on the original NRC list of sites for the GEIS public meeting, are indeed interested in radioactive waste issues after all, and we hope you enjoy Orlando, one of the NRC's originally proposed sites despite the turnout. You'll always have Disney World or something. All right, here's my time to summarize the main points that we're going to be putting in detail in our elaborate comment, which we will put in before the deadline. The first point we want to make is that we submit that the GEIS as written is inadequate to both the task of satisfying the directives of the 2012 Court of Appeals, and it's also inadequate in protecting the health and safety of the public and the environment. For these reasons, we would ask the NRC to withdraw the current DGIS. Second point, we believe that the moratorium on licensing of new and relicensing of currently operating reactors should remain in place until such time as a permanent, deep, geological, high-level radioactive waste disposal facility is designed, licensed, built, and in operation, not just in theory. We ask the NRC to maintain this moratorium until this condition is reached, and ask that the moratorium be extended to include the citing and licensing of any temporary away-from-reactor storage facilities, such as those referred to as centralized interim storage facilities. It's irresponsible to continue the production of such waste without a demonstrated and operational means of disposal. The third point, we ask that you withdraw all statements to the effect that because of NRC oversight programs, NRC asserts and guarantees that spent fuel can be stored safely at reactor sites indefinitely. Such a guarantee implies that the NRC will be providing constant oversight into that indefinite period of time. Yet, one month ago, the NRC could not even guarantee that its workers would be able to come to work the next day. The hubris of such an assertion therefore borders on the colossal. And finally, we find that NRC's finding of no significant impact regarding issues like spent fuel pool fires, spent fuel pool leaks, the vulnerability of the spent fuel pools and dry-cast sites to natural disasters and terrorist assaults, and the NRC's belief in the adequacy of generic findings at reactors to be unfounded, inadequate to the protection of public health and safety, and in contradiction to the NRC's own definition of what constitutes a nuclear safety culture. And I would like to quote to you from a view graph that was presented at the Palisades Nuclear Reactor last year. "The NRC version of the safety culture is a core of values and behaviors resulting from a collective commitment by leaders and individuals to emphasize safety over competing goals to ensure the protection of people and the environment." These assertions will be elaborated on in detail in our subsequent submissions. So I want to thank you for having us.
My name is Scott Fleming, Will County Center for Economic Development. Will County Center for Economic Development is committed to creating a healthy business climate to attract Will County Center for Economic Development is committed to creating a healthy business climate to attract businesses and jobs to Illinois. We know that having a competitive, safe energy infrastructure is a key part of the economic growth equation. We are fortunate to be home to one of Illinois' nuclear power generating stations at Braywood. This facility employs nearly 1,000 people and supports many thousands of additional jobs in the region. Braywood Station pumps tens of thousands of millions of dollars directly into the area academy and invests in many worthwhile community causes. But those of us who live in and work in that area, especially someone who is looking to attract new business in the area, would not be satisfied with the substantial economic impact that we came at this expense of our safety. The Center for Economic Development is also a member of the Braywood Citizens Advisory Guild and have been fortunate to closely follow the way Braywood operates. Its culture of safety and security is second to none. And its transition to dry-cast storage of spent fuel is a good example. Exelon took the initiative to invest in dry-cast storage that provides an added level of safety and security, and we applaud them for taking that step. We also encourage the NRC to continue to work with industry to promote innovations that will further enhance the operational safety and ultimately lead to the creation of spent fuel repository for the storage of this material. The Will County CED is competent in the safety and security of the storage facilities at Braywood, and we look forward to the continued positive impacts of the station and our community for many years to come.
Thank you. Next we'll go to SY Chen.
Good evening. I'm SY Chen. I'm a professor, also Director of Health Sciences Program at Edelman Institute of Technology in Chicago. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I have several brief comments here for the effort that the NRC has done, and I just want to go over that briefly. First is expectations. Confidence, we all know, is the eyes of beholder. So sitting here tonight, people have different expectations of what confidence means. Certainly, with the NRC's scope here, it's actually very limited. We heard about limited only to the spent nuclear fuel that generally aside, but spent nuclear fuel goes much beyond. And this is a disparity of expectation because we know until and unless the spent fuel nuclear fuel becomes eligible to put in the ground in the repository, I'm not too sure how much confidence the public will have. Certainly, it is not within the scope of the EIS, but however, they're interconnected. At some point, I think that in a large part, either as a constraint or something, the EIS really had to mention ultimately there's a connection with the repository, which is unavailable, and we don't even see anything in sight. So this is just a consideration I have is that what kind of confidence you have and what expectations you come to the public to say, "I have this confidence," what do you mean by that? That's the first point. Secondly, we heard about the three scenarios about the fire of things like that, but I just tell you, what had happened in the last couple days? The台风 Haiyan happened in 15, blowing 370 kilometers per hour. Climate is changing. So that means, according to the prediction, a good part of the shoreline here is going to raise when we have a meteorite. What happened with a lot of plants that we have here, we're going to have to store the fuel by the shore there, we're going to have problems. But I'm not too sure of all these climate issues. After 60 years of operation here, that could become a reality. So are we assessing the potential risk that involve? And that's the real issue. We really don't see that being analyzed. Third point I have is actually in the EIS analysis, which I partake a lot in my career when I work at Aragon, and certainly in the EIS. Knowing this is generic EIS, there's a lot of assumptions coming into there. But every assumption has a lot of uncertainty involved. So I'm not too sure how exactly uncertainty has been analyzed much more specifically.
Dr. Chen, can we get you to wrap up, please?
Okay, so that's basically what I have, and later the last one will be the site-specific analysis, which is not part of that. How that tied into the uncertainties that we meet here could be very important, if I'm studying.
Thank you. Let's go to Maureen Hedington, followed by Laura Chamberlain and Rick Fox.
Well, my name is Maureen Hedington, and I'm a resident of Burridge, Illinois. I'm a grassroots environmental activist. Oh, sorry. Stop me over there. My name is Maureen Hedington, and I'm a resident of Burridge, Illinois. I'm a grassroots environmental activist. I'm not paying for anything I do. It is totally sweat equity. When I'm not, well, let's put it this way, there's a lot of sweat, no sleep. Those, and there's others in the room who have similar lifestyles. I am a past Director of the Illinois Environmental Council, on whose board I've served for six years. And I'm coming here today to explain why I do not have confidence in this generic EIS and why you shouldn't either. I do not have confidence when I see reactor licenses being renewed without exception. Regardless of the plant's track record, the AP wire recently, I discovered, said Illinois reactors racked up 1,126 violations. And yet, that was from the period of 2000 to 2012. And yet, the NRC has never met a license renewal. It has not lied, and licenses routinely are renewed. You must hear in Illinois, and I don't know how many people from the NRC come from this state, but we have more reactors than any other state. Four are the same make and model as the ones in the blue in Fukushima. Again, we have the safety violations, which are treated so routinely. They're seldom reported in the news except the headlines of Braywood. So I would take exception with how fine Braywood's track record has been, especially dumping polluted irradiated water on a community unbeknown to them for 10 years. In addition to leaks, we also have in recent days learned of felonies created by folks over at President's. So if our futures are in the hands of an entity, and we hear that the people that they're hiring are of this caliber, I do not have confidence. I don't have confidence in an industry that relies on our tax dollars to subsidize its own interests, loan guarantees to build new reactors, expecting Main Street to invest in what Wall Street will not. Wall Street refuses to take on the risk, and why should we? For that, I have no confidence. I also have no confidence when Presidents and Blue Ribbon Commissions are made up of, when the President's Blue Ribbon Commission is made up of industry promoters like John Rowe, the former Chairman of Exelon, and others for whom there is a clear conflict of interest in any decision-making capacity. The BRC's recommendation for CIS centralized interim storage is no solution. It just puts lethal materials onto our streets and expressways and opens it to traffic accidents and terrorist attacks. Just because, the statement I heard, "Just because we haven't had an accident yet" means that it's safe is short-sighted and realistic. I thank the Federal District Court for throwing us a lifeline. The nuclear power industry puts us at risk, our families at risk, our communities at risk. Their claims of infinitesimal risk do not reconcile with a major nuclear accident happening every 10 years. Go back and do the math. You need not be a scientist for that. I taught Chicago's inner-city schools for 20 years, and ninth-and-third graders could do that math. How could anyone have even allowed one reactor to be built with no end plan for waste? Your recommendations are not a solution. There is still no end plan. Interim means indefinite. That's not a plan. Except to stockpile it in facilities beyond the capacity for which they were built. We citizens are the only ones in this room not going to pay to be here. Be mindful when you listen to the accolades of industry or political hosts who've been the recipients of campaign dollars in terms of listening to them. These reactors are unsafe and unreliable. They are not clean. They are not green. I have no confidence in the Price Anderson Act because it's being reauthorized in 2017. It limits the nuclear power industry's liability, and it's a pickings compared to what the people in Japan are facing in trillions of dollars. Our accidents will be paid for by our own tax dollars, just like the loan guarantees and subsidies that are building these atrocities in the first place, and I thank you. That's a hard act to follow. So the NRC has a stated mandate to ensure the protection of the people and the environment. And I want to state here in argument to some of the statements earlier by some of the industry folks that nuclear power is neither safe, clean, affordable, or cost-effective. On the safety issue, I merely have to mention Three Mile Island, Chernobyl, and Fukushima. And that's all that needs to be said about the safety issue of nuclear power. The clean tag on nuclear power is absolutely ridiculous when you factor in the carbon intensive and toxicity of uranium mining in our First Nations areas across the country. And affordable and cost-competitive is a joke. As Ms. Hedington just said, the loan guarantees and the taxpayer subsidies of nuclear power should certainly be factored into every kilowatt hours that we, the hour that we think we're getting from the nuclear power plant. And I assure you that all economists agree that nuclear power without federal subsidies is neither cost-competitive nor affordable. But about the confidence in the Nuclear Regulatory Commission in their ability to safely store spent nuclear power fuel following the licensed life of every operator of every reactor, excuse me, and 60 years from now, then find a safe geological repository, really, it's laughable. I want to just ask the audience right now, who here, right this moment, feels terrorized, terrorized of what's happening in Fukushima with the spent fuel? Exactly. There we go. So nuclear power is really a terrorist organization. We all feel terrorized by this. An accident, a disaster can occur at every nuclear power plant. I have absolutely no confidence that the NRC has investigated every single possibility at every single power plant for fires, leaks, natural disasters, and terrorist attacks. So I for one, and every single person that put their hand up, has no confidence in the NRC's supposed environmental impact statement. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Fox.
Hello there. I'm Rick Fox. I'm here tonight representing the Global Warming Solutions Group of Central Illinois. Our group has, as long as we've existed for the last few years, focused on finding things to address global warming on a local basis. We've come out and strongly opposed to nuclear power in general because we feel, despite some of the carbon arguments, that it's just not the argument to justify the issue really we're here to talk about tonight, which is our confidence in how we deal with the spent fuel and the hazards that we face with the nuclear energy. My background, I have an engineering degree. I'm a software guy today, but know a little bit about engineering. My father's an engineer. One of the things when you look at engineering projects, and this is fundamentally what the argument here is, is that we can engineer our way out of this issue. And as I've stated before, any engineering project, there's a number of assumptions, and you build something to a particular set of specifications. And I think that with this particular issue, you can't set the assumptions at a point that's strong enough for us to have confidence that we can come up with really a solution that would justify keeping new plants being licensed. In particular, I think that the EIS does not do enough to address the issues related to climate change and things that may be coming along as a part of, you know, as our climate is already changing, we're seeing things happening. What happens over the next 60 years, 160 years, and further into the future? I think that there's a lot of question marks there that really have not been adequately addressed. And then my final point, I think, on confidence in this is, even if we step back and assume that the engineers have the perfect solution, both from a long-term and a short-term solution, which I do not have that confidence. But even if we assume that, the reality is, is for any of this to work, we've got to have the policymakers and the funding to pay for this. And I don't think that any of us can say that we have the confidence in our government to put the amount of money behind this that it really is going to take to address these issues that are in front of us. And that's really one of my biggest concerns with this is simply that we don't have the policies in place and we won't in the future to address this issue.
Our next speaker, let's go to Jerry Peck, followed by Linda Lewison, and then Beth Peirman.
Hello, my name is Jerry Peck. On behalf of the nearly 4,000 members of the Illinois Manufacturers Association. I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Jerry. On behalf of the nearly 4,000 members of the Illinois Manufacturers Association, I appreciate the opportunity to offer testimony today. The Illinois Manufacturers Association is the oldest and largest state manufacturing association in the United States. Manufacturers in Illinois employ more than 600,000 workers and contribute the single largest portion of the growth state product. Illinois manufacturers were responsible for over $92 billion in economic output last year alone. Illinois residents benefit greatly from an all-day low-energy policy. Our state's balanced energy portfolio of coal, nuclear, natural gas, and renewable sources ensure that we have a strong, stable energy supply at relatively low cost. Reliable and affordable energy is a key factor that helps ensure that Illinois manufacturers can remain competitive in a world economy. Nuclear plants account for 48% of electric power generated in Illinois. We encourage you to carefully consider the economic impact of regulations governing the transportation and storage of spent nuclear fuel. Nuclear power plants were never intended to be permanent storage sites for spent fuel. Since 1983, utilities have paid more than $29 billion into the nuclear waste fund, yet no permanent storage site has been opened. As a result, 13% of our nation's spent nuclear fuel remains in temporary storage in Illinois power plants. It's time to open Yucca Mountain over simpler, long-term storage facilities. Illinois residents and manufacturers greatly benefit from reliable and affordable energy produced by nuclear power plants. Any efforts to cripple the industry through vexatious regulation is dangerous, not only to our state's economy, but to the long-term health and safety of Illinois residents. Thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Lewison.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight. Is that available? Speaking tonight, wearing my hat, is the... Linda Lewisson, speaking tonight, wearing my hat, is a core team member of the Sierra Club of Nuclear Campaign. I want to address my remarks especially to speak about Zion Nuclear. Forty miles up the road at the Zion Nuclear Power Generation Plant in December, over 1,000 tons of high-level radioactive waste is going to be transferred into dry casks, as reported by Pat Daly of Zion Solutions in August 2013. In the near future, in Fukushima, over 400 tons of high-level radioactive waste are due to be transferred out of U.S. War and into dry casks. Zion was operating from 76 to 78. Fukushima was operating from 78 to 2011. What we have here is a situation where we, in the Chicago-Waukegan metropolitan area, over 6 million people, are going to be exposed to comparative or greater risk from a larger and dirtier radioactive waste fuel transfer, which is projected to take about a year to complete at both places than what is going to happen soon in Fukushima. Although everyone is doing their best at Zion Solutions, a shell company authorized through Exelon, the scale of decommissioning fuel transfers has never, this scale of decommissioning has never been attempted before. We, the people who live within 15-mile radius of Zion, remain deeply concerned because the public oversight and transparency is far from adequate to the enormity and riskiness of the task. Radiated fuel transfers have never been attempted before on this scale. So where does a generic environmental impact statement figure into the decommissioning process? The situation at Zion and Fukushima changes from moment to moment, not only on the visible level, which we can see, but even more critically at the molecular and subatomic level. This is a quote from an authority from Canada, Dr. Gordon Edwards. "A central fact about radioactivity is that no one knows how to turn it off. Radioactive materials continue to emit atomic radiation at a rate which cannot be influenced by any of the usual factors: heat, pressure, chemical reactions, absorption, dilution. Nothing can be used to speed up, slow down, or stop the process of radioactive disintegration from occurring." This central fact means that, quote, "radioactive cleanup," unquote, is a very misleading phrase. It suggests to ordinary people that we can somehow get rid of radioactive contamination, but we cannot do so, at least not in any absolute sense. All we can do is move the contamination from one place to another. If you decontaminate one site, you must be contaminating another site. The contamination may be repackaged, consolidated, or managed, or made less available to the environment of living things, but it cannot be eliminated. Governments and their electorates have been misled by the nuclear industry into believing false notions about nuclear waste. Laws have been passed, millions of dollars spent. They do not know how to do this. There is no way to clean up or dispose of radioactive waste. So how could we ever capture one moment in time with something called GDIS and presume that it will capture what is happening in this ever-changing reality? Every reactor site is unique. If they were to drop one cask out at Zion, you could punch a hole in the bottom of the pool. It would partially drain and, in a worst-case scenario, set fuel on fire in a few hours of an order of magnitude greater than Chernobyl. These are catastrophic risks, and we cannot address them through this absurdity of a generic impact statement. And these are site-specific impacts in this very densely populated area that we need to take into consideration as we make our future planning. In closing, we oppose the Nuclear Regulatory Commission's waste confidence draft GIS and ask NRC to withdraw for thorough revision. We have no confidence in the NRC's lack of a plan in place. As my colleague Shirley Bain from California put it years ago, why would we ever support an energy source that had no plans and knew there was no way to safely dispose of its deadly radioactive waste when it began, hid this from the public, and we are now left with the creation of endless waste, endless economic and environmental cost, and endless risk to ourselves and to the planet? Why would we ever pick such an energy source in the first place? Thank you.
Does that work better in the back? Is this better?
Yes.
Hello, and thank you for providing an opportunity for me to speak tonight. My name is Betty Kirman. I'm here on behalf of Michigan State Energy Future, which is an environmental activist group located in South Haven, Michigan. We formed in January after a number of safety issues at the Palisades Nuclear Plant in Covert, and our focus was a twofold. One, to shut down Palisades before it melts down, and the other... the other... the other... and the other was to promote alternative, clean energy sources. I come before you today because I have serious concerns. Nuclear waste is toxic. Clean and safe are not terms that you can use to describe nuclear waste or its production. And yet members of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and their staff are repeatedly trying to sell to the public those false codes. Therefore, one wonders how the members of the NRC could determine an environmental assessment finding of no significant impact regarding nuclear waste and its storage resulting in the recommendation of a generic treatment with no further oversight for 100 years. While reviewing the documents for comment, the term "adequate" repeatedly appears regarding the steps currently used to store toxic nuclear waste. Whenever I hear the term used by NRC staff to describe any of the nuclear plants across the country, but in... whenever I hear the term used by NRC staff to describe any of the nuclear plants across the country, but in particular Antertise Palisades Nuclear Plant, I cringe. I am not sure how the use of this term is supposed to be reassuring to the public since it means "good enough." The connotation connected with "good enough" is mediocre. So I ask you, how safe would you feel with an adequate pilot on a turbulent transcontinental flight? Or how quickly would you deploy an adequate heart surgeon if you required surgery? Yet you throw the word "adequate" around to the public like that is supposed to reassure us about the safety of these aging, decrepit nuclear power plants in this country and what you propose as the generic treatment of high-level radioactive waste storage for a number of years far into the future. This member of the public does not share your confidence. You write as if you have access to an omniscient crystal ball, providing you access to the state of our planet for 100-plus years, when in fact, with the accelerating global warming and increasingly apparent climate change, you have no idea what is to come. We are seeing increasing detrimental superstorms wreaking unimaginable havoc, the level of which has never before occurred. Supposedly, you studied what happened at Fukushima Daiichi, and yet I have seen no evidence that you have learned anything from your study. If you had, you would be shutting down all of the nuclear plants in this country to halve the future production of toxic nuclear waste and would be devoting your full attention to resolving the problem of current toxic nuclear waste accumulation. I have a lot more to say and I'll submit my written, but I'm going to finish with this paragraph. "As stewards of this planet, it is time for the members of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission to begin to act responsibly and stop all further toxic nuclear waste production. Your job is not to represent the greedy, reckless, and irresponsible nuclear industry. You need to be prepared for a superstorm and how you will handle the consequential impact on nuclear waste storage. Contrary to what you have presented, each plant's situation and environmental impact will be different, and all will be catastrophic. Climate change is real. Superstorms are occurring, along with earthquakes, in regions where they did not previously occur with greater regularity. If you do not begin to make responsible decisions regarding the protection of this planet and its humanity, then you need to remove your NRC model, protecting people and the environment, because your adequate effort will have failed and all will be harmful as a result." Thank you.
We seem to be having a little bit of trouble with our microphones. If you guys could just hang tight for just a second, we'll try to get this worked out real fast. Hello, hello? This one, if you speak loud enough, is just fine. So if people can hold on to this mic while they're talking and project, I think you should be okay.
Test one, two. Test one, two. Can you hear me fine in the back?
Yes.
Test one, two. Test one, two.
Testing? 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 Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Testing one more time? Okay. What we'll do from now on, I'm sorry that this is not working out, you never know how these things are going to work out in advance, but for those of you who are coming up to the microphone to speak, if you would just please hold the microphone and make sure you talk into it. From up here, you can kind of hear whether you can be heard in the back, and people will give you a thumbs up or thumbs down, I'm sure. So thank you. For our next speakers, let's go ahead and go to Brandon DeGraff, followed by Kevin Camps, and Carol Kurz. And as our reminder, since it's been a few minutes, please introduce yourself when you get up to the phone.
Good evening. My name is Brandon DeGraff. Actually, an engineer that works for Exelon Nuclear. I work in the nuclear fuels department, so I'm into the dollar job, the topic we're talking at the end of the day. To give you some background about me, I have a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering and a master's degree in nuclear engineering. I've been working in the industry for about four years now and currently responsible for managing reload for Quad Cities Station. So I'm the class of engineers at the Exelon and the Nuclear National Center, smart, intelligent young individuals. So the fundamental question of today's meeting is, do we have reasonable assurance that it's safe to store spent fuel beyond the licensed life of nuclear plant power plants? And to answer this question, the NRC put together the generic environmental statement, which concludes that it is safe to store. And upon reviewing it and using my engineering background and knowledge from the industry, I agree with their conclusions. The fact of the matter is, even if we never get a repository, spent fuel pools and dry casks are both safe options based on their continued performance. In fact, Illinois has the largest inventory of used spent nuclear fuel and has not had a spent nuclear fuel accident. And that's not short-sightedness, that's proven engineering. My... I'm sorry, this is because both technologies are designed to be robust. Every day, we think about what's the worst-case scenario. That's what I'm tuned to do and be designed to protect the health and safety of the public. So for example, spent fuel pools, they're designed with reinforced concrete walls, stainless steel liners, leak-detection systems, redundant monitoring, cooling, and makeup-water systems. Dry casks, they're designed with leak-tight steel cylinders, they're actually welded shut, and they have concrete liners which protect and shield the environment from the radiation. I walk by these things every day, I've worked in spent fuel pool buildings, and I still get more radiation from flying on an airplane because my sister and I south. The casks are also air-cooled, have no moving parts, and are not dependent on any operator or system actuation to be safe. In fact, in Fukushima, there were casks at that facility, they were knocked over, they were wetted, but they were safe, not only any radiation. At the spent fuel pool, as much as some of the media might have said that there was accidents, because the spent fuel pool had lost water, none of the fuel were actually uncovered if you actually read the reports from the analysis staff of the accident. So on top of all that, the fuel itself is robust. I mean, we pick materials so that they can handle the harsh environment of the reactor, so it has to be degradation-resistant. So once it becomes spent used, or spent nuclear fuel, that's properties don't magically disappear, it's still degradation-resistant. So it comes down to this, I mean, as nuclear engineers, the last thing we want to do is cause any harm to the environment. I mean, I have a son and a family at home, and I care about the environment just as much as you. You know, many of us became nuclear engineers because we know it's a great technology and it's a workable technology today. So I hope one day we can actually do one better and reprocess the fuel and minimize the amount of waste that actually is produced, but until then, there is reasonable assurance that we can safely store spent fuel in dry casket pools. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Kevin Camps. I work at Beyond Nuclear as radioactive waste specialist. We're a national watch out group on the nuclear power industry. I also serve on the Board of Directors of Don't Waste Michigan, which is a statewide coalition, and I represent the Kalamazoo chapter, which is my hometown. And I was planning to speak about some site-specific issues in this region of the country, specifically the Great Lakes Basin. So as some previous speakers have mentioned, there are four reactors in Illinois, which are Fukushima Daiichi twin designs. These are General Electric Mark I Boiling Water Reactors located in Dresden and Quad Cities. And we've seen on live television what these reactors are capable of in terms of risks if you lose the electric grid and the emergency diesel journey risk for a long enough period of time. And the pool risks are also highlighted by what's happened at Fukushima Daiichi. As Linda Lewison mentioned earlier, the extraction of the high-level radioactive waste from the Unit 4 pool is about to begin at Fukushima Daiichi, Unit Number 4. It's a very dicey operation. The cooling water at one point was saltwater, so the fuel is likely corroded. The fuel may be bent, it may be damaged, it could fail during this unloading procedure. There's the largest General Electric Mark I boiling water in the world at Fermi, Unit 2, in Monroe, Michigan. And ironically enough, it shares a lot in common with Fukushima Daiichi, the Number 4. Some 40 years ago, the structural weldings were not put in place that can support the crane and 100-ton waste transfer casks that would be used to remove the fuel. So, despite having a permit for dry cask storage for several years now, Fermi Unit 2 still has all of the waste that's ever generated in its high-level radioactive waste storage pool. The dangers include just simply dropping one of these heavy loads through the floor of the pool, as Linda mentioned. The scenario of partial drain-down is the worst-case scenario, where you have no air cooling whatsoever, and you could have radioactive inferno in just a few hours' time, which would dwarf what we've seen at Fukushima Daiichi thus far. I wanted to shift, with my remaining time, to dry cask storage risks in this part of the country. The way I got involved in these issues 20 years ago was in Alisades, near Kalamazoo, on the Lake Michigan shoreline. A lot of people, including the Attorney General of Michigan, fought the loading of those dry casks, and for very good reason. They're 100 yards from the water of Lake Michigan. In fact, they're in violation of NRC earthquake safety regulations. This was brought to light in February of 1994 by the NRC Region 3 Dry Cask Storage Inspector, Dr. Ross Mansman, who's now retired. He warned that an earthquake could open up the sand that those casks rest on, and they could find themselves on the bottom of Lake Michigan. And in fact, there's enough physol material still in the waste that, in the presence of water, you could have a chain reaction in the waste. So, that's a risk going on on the Lake Michigan shoreline right now. My final point has to do with a whistleblower right here in the Chicago area, Oscar Shirani, who passed away a number of years ago, who called attention to the shortcuts on safety going on with the whole tech cask design. In a short, three-day inspection, he and a team of experts from across the country identified nine categories of quality assurance violation of the whole techs. These are deployed at Dresden, and he questioned the structural integrity of these dry casks sitting still. So, for over a decade now, hundreds of environmental groups have called for pools to be emptied into hardened onsite storage, a major safety upgrade on status quo dry cask storage, fortifications against terrorist attacks, safety guards against accidents. That's what needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And following Carol, let's go to Sandy McCombe, Doug O'Brien, and then Tom Riley. This is Carol.
Hello, everybody. A lot of the comments that I was going to make have been covered at some point, but I will run through them, what I have, hopefully, in addition. I'm concerned about the safety of nuclear energy. It does not have a reliable safety history. There have been 26 accidents in the U.S. since 1961, some with fatalities. That's one every two years, the most notable being the Three Mile Island. Fukushima in 2011 is important because we have four Mark I's here in Illinois. Radiation is still pouring into the Pacific Ocean as workers randomly try to keep rods covered with water. Now, there's talk of robots to remove rods from the reactor without causing a catastrophic fire. This accident wasn't supposed to happen, but it did, and it should be a wake-up call for all of us. In the U.S., spent fuel pools are even more crowded than Japan's. The NRC was to find permanent leak tights. I didn't hear that, right? What did I do?
Testing? Testing?
But he's dead.
Now I think it would turn on. Okay, thank you. I must say, the spent fuel pools are more crowded than Japan's. The NRC was to find permanent leak tights. The NRC was to find a permanent leak type site for spent fuel. With Yaku off the map and our nuclear waste pouring past 70,000 tons, a federal court ruled in 2012 that the NRC could not proceed with new licenses or extensions until they completed an environmental study to show the environmental and health effects over time if spent fuel was not stored in a repository. The NRC's draft waste confidence GIs skirts the issue of long-term storage safety by assuming fuel in dry casks can be managed indefinitely for hundreds of years. It does not consider the possibility of terror attacks, nor mention the impacts of pool leaks, especially tritium, where there's a significant history of such accidents, nor show concern for earthquakes, tornadoes, floods, which grow stronger with climate change. In addition, the waste problem is further convoluted by NRC's proposal to include in reactor licenses their idea that spent fuel can be stored safely above ground forever, which would end any public discussion about permanent storage and creation of more waste since there is no problem. There's talk of Illinois becoming a centralized interim storage site, although interim seems to be taken on a new meaning of possibly forever. Maps from Oak Ridge National Laboratory put Illinois number one, and all but a few maps because of our centralized location. We also have the most reactors and the largest amount of waste. We don't want interim storage here. Fuel should be moved only once, on the way to the repository. Interim storage wastes time and money, and we'd be a prime destination for terrorists. The cycle of making waste we can't dispose of is insanity. There's already enough waste for one Yaku. Now, we're working on two. We should follow the lead of the Swedes and the Finns in Bariet. Aging nuclear power plant licenses should not be extended or new ones built until a permanent repository is built. We ask that the NRC withdraw its proposed DTIS until the NRC provides substantial proof and scientific evidence of the safety of their conclusions. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Sandy McCombe. Followed by Doug O'Brien.
Good evening. I do like speaking in microphones. The federal courts have said NRC must have a valid and realistic assessment of the environmental impact of long-term storage of spent nuclear fuel. In response, the NRC plans to take only two years for the EIS, or more correctly, the environmental review. NRC's own staff says it will take seven years to do an EIS. The two-year timeframe NRC is using has been only enough time to summarize the currently available information about the risks of long-term storage, and the existing information is inadequate. One study is looking at the long-term storage. It's been started, but it'll take until 2019 to finish. NRC is currently assuming what will happen in the distant future. Assumptions of the effect of climate change, for example, and some of these we can already see are wrong. For example, the GEIS says a one meter rise in water level won't endanger any plant. There are, in fact, three plants that would be impacted by this rise in water level. NRC also has not adequately studied the environmental impact of fuel degradation and cask deterioration over time. Finally, since the NRC is doing a generic environmental impact study, the site-specific issues, of which there are several major issues, aren't being addressed. Sounds to me like we're inviting catastrophe. Is this what we want? Should NRC be licensing and relicensing plants based on their grossly inadequate GEIS? The answer is a resounding no. They must not be allowed to just state they are confident the waste will be safely stored without any basis in fact. NRC's response and their GEIS is not any better than their past position of just stating they were confident that waste would be safely stored. I don't feel safe.
And following that, we'll go to Tammy Thompson, Amanda Stenson, and Edward Smith.
My name is Doug O'Brien. I'm the Executive Director of the Illinois Clean Energy Coalition, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak at this hearing today. When it comes to the rhetoric of a lot of the activists who oppose nuclear energy, the story always remains the same. There's some hypothetical scenario or red-herring issue concocted to represent the immediate peril supposedly created by nuclear power. But as always, upon closer examination, the story unravels. The storage of spent nuclear has been taking place in Illinois for decades, in fact, for half a century, since the first commercial reactor went online in Illinois. In that time, there has not been a single breach at a spent fuel storage facility. There has not been a single case of public injury or contamination as a result of spent fuel storage facility failing. There has not been a single instance where any person or group has been able to obtain spent fuel for nefarious purposes. Now, of course, the past is no guarantee of what's to come in the future. These are facts, plain and simple. To try and counter these facts in the overall safety record of nuclear energy with scenarios worthy of the most inventive Hollywood screenwriter is to irresponsibly distract from what should be a serious discussion of the important role of nuclear power in creating a diverse and independent energy supply for our country. These tactics also divert attention from the growing chorus of support for nuclear energy from the environmental movement itself, among those who realize that if we are going to reduce our carbon footprint in a meaningful way, we must rely on the single greatest source of carbon-free emission: nuclear. There are many examples in recent media about the environmental leaders, about how the global warming's Mount Rushmore leaders in the environmental community wisely embrace nuclear power, and the Energy Secretary, who states that nuclear power will play a key role in the fight against climate change. Now, we can juxtapose the hypothetical scenarios that try to paint spent fuel storage as some impending doom with some very tangible data. According to NASA client scientist James Hansen, who is a leading voice in the battle against global warming, the use of nuclear power generation has globally prevented the emission of over 60 billion tons of greenhouse gases and has prevented as many as 1 million premature deaths globally. This is quantified. It's not based on what-ifs, maybes, theoreticals, or scenarios. The Illinois Clean Energy Coalition promotes the use of clean energy sources in a competitive and sustainable marketplace that will fuel our economy while benefiting our environment. The Coalition supports the proposed waste confidence rule because the facts show that spent fuel can be and is safely and securely stored in Illinois. We further urge the NRC to move forward expeditiously with the construction of a central spent fuel repository, which will help us further develop the potential nuclear energy and nuclear science across the nation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Thompson. Can everybody hear me?
No.
No? I'm Tammy Thompson. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Who here is a nuclear neighbor? If you live in Illinois, you're a nuclear neighbor. If you live in the United States, you're a nuclear neighbor. It is insane to me, the previous gentleman that was up here talking about Mr. Hansen, and I've seen him speak before, I have some respect for him. He doesn't live in a nuclear neighborhood, never has, doubt that he ever would, considering what goes on at Braywood and Preston, because the leaks out there, the water still hasn't been fixed for the people, they have all these trillion leaks. The moms can't explain why their kids are bleeding from their eyes, and the parents are paying really high medical bills for dentistry to have their jaws wired shut for kids in the fourth and fifth grade because their teeth are separating due to radiation exposure. Not to mention all the kids that keep showing up at Mayo Clinic that have radiation overdoses and nobody knows anything about it. People quote movies, but this one I like to quote, "What we have here is a failure to communicate." This NRC meeting, I can't thank you for, it's a farce. It was not publicized. I was told that they haven't paid to publicize this. There's many newspapers and more of the organizations that would put it out there. And I guarantee you that if the public knew exactly what was going on at all these facilities, they would say no to this. How many people do you know have died from radiation, or, excuse me, exposure to solar panels? How about wind? Think if they had solar and wind backup rather than diesel, there was only a limited amount of time, what would have happened in Japan? I do have friends and family in Japan, and what they're living through is a living hell. What these communities are living in, in Braywood and Dresden, which, by the way, do, you know, on occasion shut their emergency alarm systems off, but it doesn't get reported, it's just wrong for you to even consider this and call it something that's safe. It's not safe. It was designed to be a bomb, it was designed to kill, and kill it does. I don't want it in my state, I don't want it in my country, and there's better alternatives than that. We are smart women, we are Americans, and we can do better.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Earth. Good evening, everyone. My name is again Stenson. I am at Braywood Station. I've worked in radiation protection for three years, and to a lot of you, it may not seem like a very long time to really gain grasp on how serious it is to work in the nuclear industry. I talked to a lot of you before the meeting, and I appreciate all of those that did come up and talk to me about their opinions on the nuclear industry. I want to talk to you about my opinion of the nuclear industry and what I've worked with the last three and a half years. I have confidence in our plan, I have confidence in our safety. There are a lot of different examples I can give you, but one of them, a lot of you guys are mentioning terrorist attacks. Every three years, the government comes up with a team of military individuals to break into our power plants, called a force on course, and every year, since I've been there, for the last 10 years, Braywood's been successful in passing that, they really try to break in, they break down the wires, they shoot fake weapons at each other, kind of like really high-tech laser gun. But that's really safe. I mean, we defend, we come up with scenarios, we try to defend ourselves against terrorist attacks. I also wanted to bring up operating experiences. We learn from our mistakes. We learn from our mistakes. TMI happened in 1979 and out of that, ECO was created. And I don't know any other industry that is open to other businesses talking to each other about their problems than the nuclear industry. We have forums set up across the country to discuss each other with what other problems we might be having to kind of gain insight to how to solve those, and that's unheard of in any other industry. That's why I have confidence. We're not afraid to say that we made a mistake and we need to fix it. Another thing about safety is that Braywood is rated an EPP Star Safety Site, and that's not something that corporate pays for, that's something that comes from the people that work there. A lot of people have jobs in other manufacturing industries. You may have to wear a hard hat, you may have to wear safety glasses, you may have to wear steel-toed shoes. Those are just requirements to work in our plants. And it goes beyond just those things, too. It goes to the level of checking components to a degree that you never would have thought that we actually do. So that's another reason why I have confidence in our station's safety. The first week that I started at Braywood, I started in radiation protection, as I mentioned before. The first class that they put me in was on dry cast storage. And it wasn't because I was on the team, it was because I worked on the power plant and they wanted me to understand what they were going to be doing outside. And that's the kind of level of effort that our company excellent puts on its employees. They want us to understand what's going on and how to explain to other people, like give a lot of tours. And, you know, coming, watching students come in and talk to them about the safety of the plant and just really answering any questions that they have. I've also talked to college students as well about this as well. And that's why I have confidence. I thank you, the NRC, for having this meeting, and I urge you to finalize the Waste Confidence Draft Rule and to grow, yeah, time and matter to help our company work to its best. Thank you.
Thank you. And after our next speaker, we'll go ahead and go to Jeff Dunlap, Jan Boudart, and Christine Gregory.
My name is Ed Smith. I work for the Missouri Coalition for the Environment in St. Louis, Missouri, the Safe Energy Director. St. Louis purified is the uranium from the Belgian Congo that went into the first self-sustained nuclear chain reaction at the U of Chicago. We have some of the oldest radioactive wastes on the planet, and it doesn't take a nuclear accident to have to worry about cleaning it up. We're still dealing with it. So regardless of a hypothetical accident, release of radioactivity into the environment is a significant challenge that takes decades to address. One problem we have, just so everybody knows, is some of this radioactive material, significant amount of thorium-230, made it into a landfill in the Missouri River, online, which is currently experiencing a subsurface landfill fire a thousand feet away from the radioactive wastes. And we're bickering with the EPA and other government agencies on exactly how to disposition these radioactive wastes, just actually people that want to leave it there. We can't find a proper solution to deal with this so-called low-level ionizing radiation in the landfill. What the heck are we going to do with the stuff that's sitting in the spent fuel pools, like the 2,363 fuel assemblies at the Callaway 1 nuclear reactor that my organization is legally challenging for license extension of? But when we went to go challenge the license extension, we faced challenges, including challenges to spent nuclear fuel pool. We'd only, we'd have to prove that there was site-specific degradation to the fuel pool, is my understanding, I'm not aware. But we couldn't comment or challenge the future integrity of that unless we'd experienced issues. So if the NRC incorporates the draft GEIS into every reactor license, the conclusion that spent fuel, excuse me, the conclusion is that spent fuel can be safe, with the conclusion that spent fuel can be safely stored above ground indefinitely will forbid future analysis of spent fuel in reactor licensing actions like ours, silencing the concerns of growing populations around nuclear reactors. The draft GEIS re-institutes a kick-the-can-down-the-road approach that has failed to address the magnitude of our nuclear waste problem and legacy. Assuming that institutional controls will work is absurd. Like this landfill that I mentioned, the Environmental Protection Agency doesn't know where a pile of radioactive dirt went. Says so in its documents. It's ridiculous to think that institutional controls will work for centuries, let alone a couple of decades. Putting the GEIS into effect after the operating life of a nuclear reactor is a sham and no way to proper approach to spent fuel management. I say this because reactors were licensed to operate for 40 years and then they were meant to retire. The NRC has a lot of reactors to operate up to 60 years and possibly 80. That means it'll be 140 years or longer before we figure out where that stuff's going. It's important to get this right because the nuclear industry wants thousands of small modular reactors around the world, which means at least hundreds, if they get their way, around the country. And these will be the operate, this will be the guidance for hundreds of small modular reactors. It's important that they get it right, which is why they should be withdrawing this current plan and going back to the drawing board. Underestimating the risk puts taxpayers, as we, some other folks said, at significant risk due to the liability factor. It doesn't, just because we haven't had one, doesn't mean one can't happen. There's tons of unknown unknowns out there, and one accident will cap the liability at $21 billion, I believe it is. And with Congress, yeah, and while with Congress not even being able to allocate funding to Sandy, how are we going to expect them to fund a nuclear disaster? Thanks.
I'm Jeff Dunlap, I'm the Manager in the Area Spent Fuel at Exelon, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide this comment on behalf of Exelon. While we have shown, continue to show as an industry that we can safely store fuel at our sites, both dry and wet storage. It is important to continue progress on a permanent solution for the storage of spent fuel. Exelon supports the development of the GEIS as a stepping stone in this process and supports and agrees with conclusions of this report. The draft report is a rigorous examination of the environmental impact based on 50 years of research and operating experience. The report draws on industry, government, and academic references to compile a complete review of the potential impacts of spent fuel storage. The report appropriately looks at bounding conditions over the time periods in question, and the conclusion forms a sound basis for continued nuclear fuel storage and disposal. As a generic report, we understand the use of bounding assumptions. These types of assumptions result in a conservative product that is used on a generic basis, but also may not be fully representative of what will occur at a site with fuel storage in the future. For instance, the report assumes that dry transfer facility will be built at all dry cast storage facilities, and that all dry casts will be replaced every 100 years. While the conditions of the cast will of course be closely monitored over the lifetime of the facility, and a rigorous aging management program is already in place, it is unlikely that wholesale replacement of all cast will be required, and the transfer facility may not be needed for all sites. Furthermore, NRC is correct in concluding that it is feasible to have a mine geological repository available in 60 years after the licensed operating life of a nuclear power plant, as assumed in the analysis of a short-term impact in the GEIS. There should be no technical obstacles to achieving this, nor are there any financial obstacles, given that the Nuclear Waste Fund now has a balance of more than $26 billion. Despite recent delays in the process due to political and legal maneuvers, progress is being made in establishing a permanent repository. The NRC is resuming the licensing proceedings for the Yuckamunk application, which will further inform efforts in developing a geological repository. Legislation is pending in the Senate to begin the process of selecting alternate sites using a consent-based approach consistent with the recommendations of the Nuclear Protection Commission. This progress supports the conclusion of the draft GEIS. We have the technology to develop a geological repository for spent nuclear fuel, and we have the money to do so. The only thing blocking the United States from building a geological repository is political decision-making. In the interim, for storage at the reactor, as I have said, we continue to safely store fuel in both wet and dry storage. And just to add a little perspective, the amount of storage required is very small. If we stacked all the stored fuel in Illinois up to the height of an average person, it would only fill up half of one football field. The NRC environmental assessment of nuclear fuel storage accurately reflects that environmental impacts are small for both continuous storage at plant sites and away from reactor storage, even with many bounding assumptions that may overstate the impact. This conclusion is based on a storage systems for nuclear fuel that are proven technology with robust design and safety features that prevent environmental impacts. The analysis contained in that draft, in the draft Waste Confidence Generic Environmental Impact Statement supports what the industry has long known. If necessary, use fuel to be stored in a safe, environmentally sound manner for a long period while we wait for the political process to match agreement on a disposal solution. In the meantime, the NRC can and should issue its Waste Confidence Rule. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
And after Jan, let's go to Vincent Heddington and Susan Korn.
I'm going to start with a basic question about the fact that there has been some anecdotal testimony here about the effects of living near nuclear power plants, and the people who come to represent the industry have nothing to say about the anecdotal evidence. The stories about what happens to families and children who are living near these plants, and the possibility of birth defects that are almost unbelievable. So I'm asking this question because there was an earlier comment about this. Residents around reactor sites may not have signed up to store radioactive waste indefinitely, but they also did not sign up for 20-year extensions of operating licenses. Yet the NRC imposes that on communities without cause and without exception. So I'm very moved by the anecdotal evidence because the anecdotal evidence from Chernobyl was cut off, and the difficulties of tracing the effects of the explosion at Chernobyl were massive, and eventually the strong scientific mind says, well gee, you're just giving us anecdotal evidence, when it was evidence, when it was all the evidence that they had. And I have a question. Why can't insurance companies insure these sites? If the nuclear power plants are so safe, then there should be a way for insurance companies to insure them. But that doesn't happen because, what'd you tell them?
Two.
Did it say two?
One.
One. But that doesn't happen because the consequences of accidents at nuclear power plants run in the billions. I thought that Harry Anderson in the last speech, he said, well, we've got $26 billion to take care of nuclear waste. I believe that the cost of Chernobyl has exceeded a trillion at this point, and nobody has, nobody ever mentions the first responders there or at Chernobyl that aren't now all dead, and the effects of the whole nuclear project, the effect that the whole nuclear power project is having in the world. We're very, very much against having Iran develop nuclear power of their own, because we know that the byproduct of a nuclear reactor is plutonium that is used in atomic bombs. And this is the most dangerous element, or it's the most dangerous isotope in the world. And it had to be gone from the earth before the biosphere could develop. Now that the biosphere has developed and we're bringing the plutonium back to our enormous risk.
I'm a good city citizen, a resident of Burr Ridge. And can you believe it? Can you really believe it, sometimes listening to the comments here tonight of the proponents of nuclear power, I think they're from another planet? Can you believe that we are supposed to believe that nuclear power plants can continue producing waste without an adequate plan, an adequate plan for its disposal? This toxic radioactive waste, we're supposed to go along on this gamble, on this grand experiment, that an industry can produce waste in a way when it doesn't know how it's going to handle it? In the meantime, we are exposed to the possibility of a nuclear accident. Nobody here in this room can say with assurance that there will not be an accident. We have the evidence of Fukushima. I listened to the proponents, they downplay the effects of Fukushima, they downplay the accidents that have happened, and we're supposed to bear that kind of a risk. I refuse to bear that kind of a risk. What needs to happen? We need to stop producing the waste, we need to stop licensing nuclear power plants and their relicensing, we need to stop this insanity.
Let's go to Susan Korn. And after Susan, we'll go to Corey Khan and Dale Lehman.
Good evening. Can I turn it back?
No.
A little louder. A little louder? Okay. My name is Susan Korn. I'm a Director in the Nuclear Project Management Organization at Exelon. I'm part of the team that's responsible for the construction of spent fuel storage infrastructure at our sites. First and foremost, I just want to say that I am extremely proud to be an Exelon nuclear employee. I have a degree in nuclear engineering and have worked in the industry for 25 years. And a side note, I have had three children, I have been pregnant. Through working at the plants, I have three healthy, young adult women, so I'm a testimony that working in a plant, being pregnant, has no impact on very healthy children.
That you know.
That was a side note, that was not in my notes. What I really want to tell you is, I have worked for a long time in the industry, and I can tell you that folks that I work with throughout the organization, from top to bottom, have an appreciation that nuclear power is special. We get that, we understand it's special. And it's our priority, every day in what we do, to ensure that we operate these plants in a manner that protects the health and safety of the public. We do live in the vicinity of plants, we have family, we have friends, we have our colleagues, we care about them deeply, we would not put any of those people in harm's way. Exelon employees are committed to ensuring that our plants grow safely. Our plants operate 93% of the time, regardless of the weather or the time of day, providing a reliable baseline output greater than any other generation's source. We understand that the decisions we make on a daily basis have the potential to impact the lives of our coworkers, our family, and the surrounding communities. Because of this, we hold each other accountable. We challenge, we train, we continuously improve. If you spend the day with us in our facilities, it would be apparent to you, we take nothing for granted. We get independent expert opinions on technical issues. You would see that our employees are encouraged to and are comfortable with challenging each other. You would hear every morning across our organization, industry experience being shared, and actions taken to ensure that we mitigate potential issues. We take our job seriously, and this extends to the design, building, maintenance, and security of our spent fuel storage system. Our dry cast storage containers, they're rugged, they're steel-lined with thick concrete closed structures. They are designed and proven to protect the fuel under the most extreme weather conditions or other destructive forces. extreme weather conditions or other destructive forces. I personally have no doubt that this passive cooling technology offers a long-term solution that will protect my colleagues, my family, and my neighbors, and I fully support the ruling. Thank you.
My name is Corey Kahn, I'm a resident of Chicago for the last 17 years. We know a lot of defective casks arrived from Moltech. That resident was loaded after some welding was done without a post-welding treatment violation of Tennessee Far Fifty Penix B. A lot of problems with those casks that lead to reasonable expectation that they do not have the strength that the original designs had. I'm sure you're proud to work there, but you know that's a private, dirty operation. Years ago, I read a phrase, it started with me, and I mentioned it to a friend who was also actively concerned about nuclear waste on reactors which make it. I was equally startled by my friend's reaction, which was, "Don't even say that." That phrase was, "Nuclear waste tends to remain where it is first placed." Now, a dozen years later, I'm hearing exactly this from NRC. As my friend made him foresee, it is being offered as a foundation for licensing decisions, and don't say that it is not. In 1984, when the original Waste Confidence Decision was published, the NRC believed and assured us that the repository would be available just 24, 25 years into the future. Soon, the belief receded to a repository available 41 years after the Waste Confidence Decision was first articulated. Now, the NRC assures us that a suitable repository will be available when necessary. A term which I interpreted to mean repository availability prior to onsite storage failure, that's just-in-time. JIT, Just-In-Time Inventory Management. I've always understood that term to be a euphemism for almost too late. And an available repository is actually of little value if thousands of tons of freshly irradiated fuel are in these precariously perched in the elemental pools. It matters not that waste may also be stored nearby in dry casks, as every operating reactor must also have its pool. This conclusion in the updated decision is unanchored reality, when necessary, it is science fiction or fantasy. The Commission hasn't performed a thorough and comprehensive analysis of the future dangers and consequences on the site of onsite storage 60 years after the cessation, and offers only a retrospective that's rosy. Yet we all know that cask performance is not necessarily indicative of future results. So cool breakdown, boil-off, and zirconium fire comprise the natural end state toward which nuclear affairs are naturally drawn by a great tractor, the natural course of things. Only through the ongoing interventions of dutiful employees has it been forestalled. Like jugglers, operators have been attentive to every glitch, catching every ball before it reaches the ground. Where in NRC's thorough, comprehensive, but unperformed analysis of the future should we expect to find such youthful employees? Six decades after the nuclear steam supply business has gone bust? I'll just make a casual reference to Michael Burnham and the convicted masked gunman carjacking senior operator with six years of unscrewed access to prison with his casket. It's faith-based waste balancing, licensing, relicensing, and taking, actions taken under this document, which is perpetually brotherless and drifting on overfilled pool.
Very good.
Is it true that the hazards and insecurity of pool storage are so grave that they must be withheld from us as classified safeguards information or official use-only security? Could anyone possibly believe that redacted material supports NRC's finding with no significant impact? We require a much larger margin of safety between us and the American spent fuel pool fire. If we require our better decisions about plutonium, NRC should perform court-ordered analysis.
Hi. My name is Dale Lehman, I'm a citizen of Chicago. Appreciate the chance to speak to the NRC's, or in the NRC's Confidence Game. The fact is that this kind of reading, the conversations, pro and con, took place in Japan not so long ago, where the technicians and the proponents of nuclear power assured the public that they were uninformed, that things operated carefully, well-designed, high-tech, knowledge, security, no previous accidents. All that is gone now. Japan itself almost became a failed state. It remains to be seen whether they can sustain themselves. Tokyo was heavily irradiated in the accident. Japanese government lied about that because of business interests. Japanese government elevated the standards of radiation, allowing for children to address the severity of the contamination rather than evacuating, because the main concern was money. A healthy business of climate, which we've heard addressed earlier, is not necessarily a healthy future for mankind. Business operates generally, in our current state, at the expense of the public's health and the future of the planet. A lot of people think that this is hyperbolic, yet we cannot act to deal with climate change in a meaningful way. The NRC has no ability to assure me with confidence that a superstorm, a super tornado passed over any of the proposed future storage sites indefinitely. Can you guarantee me that 200 mile an hour winds will leave those fuel pools unaffected? Will you force the operators of those plants to upgrade to a level to ensure that? I don't think so, because they don't want to spend the money necessary to make an unsafe technology theoretically safe. There's a question of whether we're going to survive as a society, just like Japan, in the event of regional superstorms coming from increasing disturbances in the Arctic. Our big news, a real-time website of observations documents what's happening there now and how it's affecting northern hemisphere weather, especially over the mid-continent. We cannot be assured that a major extreme freak storm will not pass over a nuclear power plant and drain a fuel pool of its water. What happens then to your promises about safety, to your families, and to the regions which will be exposed to the same kind of radiation that's spewed from Fukushima? I think you should think twice about whether the food you put on your table because of the industry you work for is worth the future that you threaten, or that the industry... I mean no disrespect for people who work for nuclear industry. It's not a personal issue, it's a systemic issue, and the fact that this country's been overwhelmed by corporations and business whose first concern is profit over safety. Thank you.
Okay, I know everybody has been waiting very patiently. We want to give you a very quick break. We'll come back and let's make it 10 minutes. We'll start promptly at 10 minutes, so if you could come back a couple minutes sooner, that would be great.
How many more?
Good evening. My name is Jessica Kova. I'm an engineer for nuclear fuels for Exelon. I am responsible for maintaining and designing the fuel overload for my Chicago stations. Sorry. We are all here to comment on the proposed Waste Confidence Rule and its draft environmental impact statement. The rule discusses long-term storage of spent nuclear fuel. I would like to give some insights on why I support the rule. I have spent some time in my career working at nuclear stations, and I have firsthand experience with spent fuel storage. I personally walked down the dry cast storage area next to a loaded dry cast, and I have spent considerable time working near spent fuel pools. Storing fuel in either the spent fuel pool or the dry cast storage is a good thing. First, I'd like to discuss the spent fuel pool. The spent fuel pool is where spent fuel is stored until it's ready to be placed in the dry cast storage. I have spent many hours working near spent fuel pools, observing the fuel and the actions of moving fuel. This is safe locations, designed to withstand severe natural accidents, including floods, tornadoes, and earthquakes. The safety of the spent fuel pool is ensured by maintaining sufficient water level above the fuel even during active conditions. This pool is designed to be about 40 feet deep, and to contain about 20 feet of water above the fuel in an accident condition. Everyone involved with the spent fuel pool recognizes the importance of the spent fuel pool, and as an employee, I can tell you, we consider safety in every decision that we make. Next, I would like to discuss dry cast storage. Dry cast storage is proven safe technology and is designed for long-term isolation of spent nuclear fuel. The cast themselves are robust, concrete, and steel structures with no moving parts. These casks are engineered to monitor and protect 10 tons of spent fuel per cast. Over the last 30 years, the nuclear industry has loaded over 1,700 dry cast storage systems. All these systems are still in service and have had zero release of their radioactive contents. I personally have worked near dry casts, and I feel confident in their design and safety. Throughout my career, I have learned that Exelon Nuclear values the health and safety of the public above all else. Safety is infused in everything that we do. I would like to end on a more personal note. I have been an Illinois resident my entire life. Everyone I know and love, including all of my family and my friends, live here in the Chicago area. My husband and I live near these plants, and this is where we plan to raise our families. If this technology was not safe, I would not be here. That is all, thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Douglas Horrigan, I'm a resident of Zion in Illinois. As mentioned earlier, I'm a resident of Zion in Illinois, as mentioned earlier, the Zion nuclear plants currently being decommissioned, and actually, fuel transfer should be starting at any time. So Zion is going to have 65 casks of high-level waste sitting there for, I'm told now, at least a minimum of 35 years. That's if they can open a storage facility now. It'd be 35 years from now for that fuel to be moved out of Zion. So that's the best-case scenario. It just, to me, makes no sense to continue producing more waste when we don't have storage facilities, so I don't think there should be any licenses or license renewals until a permanent repository is established. This GEIS has one scenario where there's no repository at all becoming available. Again, why would we generate more waste when we're not going to have any storage facility as one possibility? And changing out these casks every 100 years, I mean, 1,000 years from now, what kind of shape are these casks going to be in if we have to change them, you know, every 100 years? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Russell. I'm a construction engineer from Iowa State, and I work at the Braywood Station Nuclear Power Plant down south of us in Illinois. The comments that I want to bring forth here are just based on my experience with the safety culture at nuclear power. The gnawing criticism we had has been based on, quite pointedly, the lack of morale or morality for some of the people in the nuclear industry, and I just really don't think that's true. Again, a lot of folks sitting here can call us young and naive, but I do represent part of the young generation in nuclear, actually, NYGN, that's exactly what it means, the North American Young Generation in Nuclear. And really, my perspective is just a shocking safety culture, especially considering what industry I was planning on going into, which was the construction industry. I understand that all cultures are born from the events of the past, but again, I'd like to talk about the recent performance, based on my experience of the nuclear industry. And I believe that it's safe to say that thinking that workers who value their own personal safety is really indicative of workers who also value safety, culture, in a bigger perspective of the effect that it has on themselves while they're working, but the public when they leave that work environment. So something I haven't heard a lot of is to throw out some actual facts and statistics. So I'm trying to do a little bit of that right now. So earlier this year, I gave a speech to some high school kids who were looking at going into the trades, and one of the things I tried to advertise to them when they were looking at what trades they wanted to pursue was to look at the nuclear industry, because really, what they want to do is ensure that longevity, and in order to do that, you want to work in a safe environment. So just pulling straight from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, looking at injuries per 100 full-time workers, the nuclear industry, it's actually pretty shocking how much better we are as far as just the personnel safety. Per 100 full-time workers, we get 0.3 injuries. To compare that to other generation, really, the only next closest generation activity you can compare that to is fossil fuel, and that's 2.1 injuries per 100 full-time workers, so several times higher. The industry that I thought I was going to go into, construction, 3.7, so even higher, and stepping up to another industry, which is, you know, an industrial sector, manufacturing, at 4.3 injuries per 100 full-time workers. So I really don't think anybody that, I really think that people who value their own personal safety, it's just a cultural norm that they're going to also value safety of the public. So one thing I did want to respond to that I saw, that I heard, mentioned a couple times with response to criticisms of casks falling through the bottom of the spent fuel pool, that's a great challenge. So the question was, why the heck would we lift these heavy structures over our spent fuel pool? And the answer is, we don't, they're designed so that we don't lift heavy structures near these safety-critical systems. And I've actually been yelled at several times when developing plans, because we have to keep these, anything over 2,000 pounds, you know, a set distance away from safety-critical things such as spent fuel pools. So again, get educated and find some facts before you jump up there trying to do what you might have. Thank you.
For our next speakers, we have to go to Aaron Scheinflug, Gail Snyder, and Tracy Fox.
Is this working okay?
Louder.
Louder? Is this working okay? Okay. My name is Marilyn Scheinflug, and I'm a former mayor of a small town in northern Illinois, and I'm also one of the original intervenors of when the Byron Plant was built in the 1970s. So I've been concerned about nuclear issues for many years. Briefly, I'll respond very specifically to the issues tonight. It's not that I'm in favor of these things, but I'm supporting the least worst alternatives. The first one is to implement dry spent fuel storage in hardened onsite casks, which was mentioned earlier. Immediate efforts should be made to transfer spent fuel sufficiently cool from wet pool storage to onsite at reactor dry storage in so-called hardened casks. This approach would avoid the need to build additional away-from-reactor interim spent fuel installations. And as recommended by Dr. Arjun Makajani, the federal government should purchase land adjacent to reactor sites to accommodate this process. Currently, the federal government is paying Thank you for your time.
My name is Douglas Horrigan. I'm a resident of Zion in Illinois.
Knocking door.
Earlier, I'm a resident of Zion in Illinois. As mentioned earlier, the Zion nuclear plants currently being decommissioned and actually fuel transfer should be starting at any time. So Zion is going to have 65 casts of high-level waste sitting there for, I'm told now, at least a minimum of 35 years. That's if they can open a storage facility now. It'd be 35 years from now for that fuel to be moved out of Zion. So that's the best-case scenario. It just, to me, makes no sense to continue producing more waste when we don't have storage facilities. So I don't think there should be any licenses or license renewals until a permanent repository is established. This GEIS has one scenario where there's no repository at all becoming available. Again, why would we generate more waste when we're not going to have any storage facility as one possibility? And changing out these casts every 100 years, I mean, 1,000 years from now, what kind of shape are these casts going to be in if we have to change them, you know, every 100 years? So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Russell. I'm a construction engineer from Iowa State and I work at the Braywood Station Nuclear Power Plant down south west in Illinois. The comments that I want to bring forth here are just based on my experience with the safety culture at Nuclear Power. And a lot of the criticism we had has been based on, quote, pointedly, the lack of morale or morality of some of the people in the nuclear industry. And I just really don't think that's true. Again, a lot of folks sitting here, you call us young and naive, but I do represent part of the young generation in nuclear, actually, NYGN is exactly what it means, the North American Young Generation Nuclear. And really, my perspective is just a shocking safety culture, especially considering what industry I was planning on going into, which was the construction industry. I understand that all cultures are born from the events of the past, but again, I'd like to talk about the recent performance, based on my experience of the nuclear industry. And I believe that it's safe to say that thinking that workers who value their own personal safety is really indicative of workers who also value safety, culture, in a bigger perspective of the effect that it normally has on themselves while they're working, but the public when they leave, when they leave that work environment. So, something I haven't heard a lot of is to throw out some actual facts and statistics. So I'm trying to do a little bit of that right now. So, earlier this year, I gave a speech to some high school kids who were looking at going into the trades. And one of the things I tried to advertise to them when they were looking at what trades they wanted to pursue was to look at the nuclear industry because, really, what they want to do is ensure that longevity. And in order to do that, you want to work in a safe environment. So just pulling straight from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, looking at injuries per 100 full-time workers, the nuclear industry, it's actually pretty shocking how much better we are as far as just the personnel safety. Per 100 full-time workers, we get 0.3 injuries. To compare that to other, other generation, really, the only next-closest generation activity you can compare that to is fossil fuel. And that's, that's 2.1 injuries per 100 full-time workers, so several times higher. The industry that I thought I was going to go into, construction, 3.7, so even higher. And stepping up to another industry, which is, you know, an industrial sector, manufacturing, at 4.3 injuries per 100 full-time workers. So, I really don't think anybody that, I really think that people who value their own personal safety, it's just a cultural norm that they're going to also value safety of the public. So, one, one thing I did want to respond to that I saw, that I heard, mentioned a couple of times with response to criticisms of casts falling through the bottom of the spent fuel pool. That's a great challenge. So, the question was, why the heck could we lift these heavy structures over our spent fuel pool? And the answer is, we don't. They're designed so that we don't lift heavy structures near these safety-critical systems. And I've actually been yelled at several times on developing plans because we have to keep these, anything over 2,000 pounds, you know, a set distance away from safety-critical things such as the spent fuel pool. So, again, get educated and find some facts before you jump up there trying to do what you want to help. Thank you.
For our next speakers, we have to begin with Shannon Scheinflug, Gail Snyder, and Tracy Fox.
Louder.
Louder? Is this working okay? Okay. My name is Marilyn Scheinflug and I'm a former mayor of a small town in northern Illinois. And I'm also one of the original intervenors of when the Byron Plant was built in the 1970s. So I've been concerned about nuclear issues for many years. Briefly, I'll respond very specifically to the issues tonight. It's not that I'm in favor of these things, but I'm, I'm supporting the least-worst alternatives. The first one is to implement dry spent fuel storage in hardened onsite casks, which was mentioned earlier. Immediate efforts should be made to transfer spent fuel sufficiently cool from wet pool storage to onsite at reactor dry storage in so-called hardened casts. This approach would avoid the need to build additional away-from-reactor interim spent fuel installations. And as recommended by Dr. Arjun Makajani, the federal government should purchase land adjacent to reactor sites to accommodate this process. Currently, the federal government is paying very large fines to utilities because of its failure to accept spent fuel for long-term storage by 1988. In other words, because Yucca Mountain wasn't finished, the federal government is on the, they have to pay fines. Once spent fuel comes under federal control, the government no longer would be required to pay these fines. Second thing is limit spent fuel transportation. On-site storage also would save unnecessary transportation costs and reduce radiation exposure risk to the general population during highway, road, and barge transit. These risks could be significant because even undamaged trans-transport casks do not have enough shielding to prevent gamma and X-ray radiation from escaping through the walls. That's, let's give some of it. If you're sitting in a car next to it, you could be exposed basically. The third thing is reduce Illinois' chances of becoming the nation's dump. Illinois already is home to over 9,000 metric tons of used nuclear fuel, more than in any other state. The previous two alternatives would work to minimize Illinois' chances of receiving an even greater proportion of the nation's spent fuel. According to an Oak Ridge National Laboratory report, as a totally separate analysis, this is in quotes, "the consolidated ISV independent storage site." And Illinois is the single optimized site for an independent spent fuel installation when only SNF at Orford Reactors is considered relative to citing the South. In other words, that's a lot of tech speak in that particular paragraph, but what it's saying is that Illinois is in a position to become the site of one of these independent spent fuel storage facilities. And of course, we have a nuclear plant, or the nuclear spent fuel facility at Morris, Illinois. Locate, okay, we should locate a geological spent fuel storage repository based on rigid scientific criteria. Maximum effort should be made to thoroughly investigate the least damaging location for a permanent repository and preferably one that allows for retrievable storage. Can we go to the next one for us?
I'm sorry, what?
Okay. The Blue Rhythm Commission proposed heavy reliance on a consent-based approach, but that reliance may not lead to the safest long-term solution. While local consent is important, that consent should be based on scientific knowledge rather than, than, rather than on improperly perceived opportunities to obtain money, jobs, and other items. In a nutshell, I'll finish it up. The waste confidence proposed rule here tonight lacks any sufficient, sufficiently thorough scientific analysis of many options, especially concerning spent fuel pool and casks, fires, leaks, and waste storage. How can long-term, let alone indefinite waste storage even be considered credible? How disintegrated will spent fuel rods be, particularly those with high burn-up fuel, when the need for transfer to new casks to the right is every 100 years or so? What assurance exists that institutional controls will be in place 240,000 years or more in the future? It's one of the half-lives of plutonium is coming 4,000 years. To oversee continued safe storage. Nuclear power needs to be phased out. Thank you. Thank you. Followed by Tracy Fox.
Can you hear me back there? My name is Gail Snyder and I'm on the board of Nuclear Energy Information Service. And I am a resident of Illinois, living in the southwest suburbs of Chicago. I'm encircled by nuclear facilities in Illinois all the way to Michigan. The residents of Illinois did not agree to become the nation's nuclear waste dump. But slowly and ever so quietly over time, the residents of Illinois have come, have come to live with the largest amount of high-level radioactive nuclear energy waste of any state in the country. If the NRC's draft generic environmental impact statement and rule are adopted, all nuclear facilities will officially become permanent nuclear waste dumps. Discovering the no-real individual environmental impact study has been done as to how 30-plus years of nuclear waste will impact an area makes the current situation even more unacceptable. Even more shocking is the government and the nuclear industry's current plan to plan that the waste may end up staying onsite forever. The courts realize that NRCs, and I would add, DOD's unrealistic handling of the nation's nuclear energy base and are forcing them to face reality, which unfortunately is not accomplished in the NRC's draft GEIS rule and rule. In the movie Pandora's Promise, what I believe to be the most important statement in the movie is made by pro-nuclear Mark Lynas. While touring the nuclear disaster area in Fukushima, Japan, he says, "This was not supposed to happen to a reactor." All the things that are not supposed to happen are definitely the problems with storing nuclear waste. In fact, this is something the nuclear industry operators, investors, governments, and their agencies that facilitate nuclear energy, as well as companies that build nuclear reactors, are concerned about. They know things that aren't supposed to happen do happen. They also know this risk creates great liability. So just like stop piling the nuclear energy waste so quietly, stop piling risk and liability as happening equally as quietly and has put upon the public unbeknownst to them a burden. The public is carrying a portion of the liability and risk for the nuclear industry. This is happening on a global scale. Last week, the U.S. Department of Energy Secretary Moonus went to Japan to offer help at Fukushima as long as Japan signed on to the Convention of Supplementary Compensation for Nuclear Damage, removing the liability for nuclear construction companies and other nuclear vendors from nuclear accidents. If you think the same will not apply here in the U.S., think again. As all those involved in facilitating nuclear power seek to extend the time the nuclear waste stays in our communities, they also seek to reduce their own liability and responsibility to the public. Worse yet, as they seek to silence us by including this generic environmental impact statement into the reactor licensing, effectively preventing the public from raising concerns and being able to request the storage, or question the storage of nuclear waste forever onsite at individual nuclear reactor facilities in their own communities. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll go to Tammy Fox, followed by Rob McCollum, Kathleen Rude, and Samantha Schulsisi. I apologize if I missed her.
My name is Tracy Fox. I work as a volunteer with the Bureau of Families Against Habsit Waste. We normally work with hazardous waste, heavy metals, and PCBs, and other things that stick around for a long time, the oil that pales in comparison with nuclear. When I reviewed the draft EIS, the first thing that I was taken aback by was the fact that it was a generic EIS and that some court had authorized that we could have one EIS that would cover what really is a relatively small number of nuclear plants, a scree hundred or so. And so I thought, all right, I'll give it the benefit of the doubt and I'll open up the big document and start to page through it. And I expected to see tables and charts that might tell me, here's where we're at as far as filling up these spent fuel pools, here's where we're using dry casts, and here's some guidelines for best practices. And I didn't find any of that. I found them kind of quirky. And then I thought, well, we're going to have certainly some best practices and some guidelines that are going to underlie these assumptions. But I didn't find any of that. I had been to some information sections by NEIS and I learned about hardened onsite storage and I expected that would get a thorough vetting in the document, but again, I didn't find any of that. Instead, I just got some things that are echoed in the executive summary tonight, categorizing everything as small risk, small risk, small risk. And I've done quite a bit of technical writing in my life and I was a little bit concerned as to how does that risk play out and how are they analyzing it? And I didn't really find any metrics that gave me too much confidence. I didn't see that they had looked beyond just saying, hmm, inconceivable possibility of this happening, therefore, we should dismiss it. To me, when we're looking at risk, we need to look at what's the probability that it's going to occur? How severe will it be if it occurs? And how likely is it that we can detect it early and put a stop to it? But I didn't see any of that kind of analysis done at all. And that's the kind of analysis that should underlie engineering and it was painfully absent. I'm also interested in the issue of climate change and I looked a little bit more detail as to what they did in that section. And I saw that they had forecasted temperature range of about 5.5 degrees Celsius and they were considering maybe it's all up to that. So I expected to see, okay, I've read the book Six Degrees. I know that when you get up to six degrees, it gets pretty horrific. But I didn't see any analysis of water usage. I didn't see anything about increasing water temperatures and how those would affect cooling. I didn't see anything about the push between climate change and water availability. Again, all of that seemed to undermine the fact that I don't believe there was any scientific basis whatsoever for the risk analysis in this document. And to me, in order to have any kind of waste confidence, confidence in any kind of a solution, you have to have an underlying risk management system that makes sense. This doesn't seem to have a system at all. Instead, I think they want to conflate waste confidence with, as my husband terms it, waste air things. And that's really all this is, the belief that we can just say, whoosh, we've got a solution, we will continue doing as we are in middle work grade and everyone will be happy. Instead, I think about the very real engineering nitpicky details, things like fatigue, stresses, on metals that begin to fail, the impacts of corrosion when things are designed for 30-year life or even a 60-year life, they do not last for 100 years. Otherwise, then they're overdesigned and that doesn't serve shareholders, so it never ever happens. I believe that we are making a lot of choices here that are not only endangering us, but also putting off choice, better choices that we could be making. For every dollar the taxpayer has to sink into nuclear power and dealing with its waste and dealing with its risk is a dollar that we can't be spending on renewables and things that will really move us forward.
I'm Kathleen Rude and I'm here speaking on behalf of my nieces and nephews and for the future generations of all walks of life. As I was thinking about what I wanted to say here in response to, to this hearing tonight, I came, I was reminded of the story of the Emperor's New Clothes. It's a story of a vain emperor who cares about nothing except wearing and displaying clothes hired. He hires two swindlers who promise him the finest, best clothes with a fabric invisible to anyone who is unfit for his position or hopelessly stupid. The emperor's ministers do not see the clothing themselves, but they pretend that they can for fear of appearing unfit for their positions. And the emperor does the same. Finally, the swindlers report with the sweetest finish and they mind dressing the emperor and he marches in procession before his subjects. And the townsfolk play along with the pretense, not wanting to appear unfit for their positions or stupid. But then there's a child in the crowd and he's too young to understand the desirability of keeping up this pretense. And he blurts out that the emperor is wearing nothing at all. And he frees everyone else in the crowd to start realizing that the emperor is naked. This is a fable that is an apt description of the nuclear industry, and the issue before us tonight is the feasibility of safely storing nuclear waste. The nuclear industry is dressed its operation in the sham of safety, claiming that nuclear power is safe and spent fuel rods can be contained so posing no threat to life on the planet. But that simply isn't true. The emperor has no clothes. Nuclear power plants produce the most deadly waste imaginable. We have already created enough radioactive waste to destroy life on Earth. And the hard truth is, we don't know what to do about it. Fukushima is not hypothetical. It is not theoretical. It is not science fiction or make-up story. It's real. And it is proof of the fallibility of nuclear power and protection of spent fuel rods. The experts don't know how to keep us safe from it. And yet, the NRC and the nuclear industry is acting as if we do. We're looking at the naked emperor and praising his imaginary outfit. Why? I believe it's because when we look at the truth, the real truth of what we've created, we are terrified, terrified of the magnitude of deadly radioactive waste that we've created and are continuing to create. We are terrified of the certainty of contamination that's already happening and the destruction of life. The USGS is already finding polar bears and seals with skin rashes and diseases and open sores. Our fish are contaminated with nuclear radiation from Fukushima. And so, we need to face the fear and embrace it because then we can take off the blinders that are keeping us in denial of the truth. We need to pay attention to the boy in this, in this fable. He speaks the truth we are afraid to see. The emperor has no clothes. We do not know how to protect ourselves from radioactive waste. We need to stop making it now. Germany has already done this two years ago because they are now exporting energy generated from solar power and other sources. So we need to stop pretending that this is safe and that we know what we're doing. And only when we embrace this difficult truth can we really start to have an honest discussion that will find some solutions. The emperor has no clothes.
My name is Samantha Schulsisi. I'm in the American Engineering Department at La Salle Station and I am responsible for providing technical guidance for power changes in the reactor and then also monitoring and tracking the fuel and all the other nuclear, nuclear waste that gets, nuclear material that's onsite. And as a fairly new face to the nuclear industry, I would just like to take a moment to speak to the extreme culture shock that I had when I arrived, a shock at, you know, the seriousness that we take with every decision that we make and at the attention that we continuously give to safety. The safety culture that's established at our plant and all the excellent plants and all of the nuclear plants, at least in the U.S. and across the world, it's held to the highest standard. Safety is always at the forefront of our mind in every decision we make and I never ever question my personal safety when I'm at work. This safety 100% translates to our nuclear waste management program. I personally work with the Dry Cast Storage Campaign at La Salle and I can testify that those casts are far more robust than you can imagine. Over 100 tons of steel and concrete form a precisely engineered structure to protect that fuel that we place inside. And I have walked past those loaded casks many times and I assure you that I get way more radiation from the sun that shining down on me than I do from those casts. They've been proven to survive severe hurricanes and earthquakes, aircraft crashes. They have flown planes into those, into those concrete cast storage and the planes disintegrated but the cast remains intact. And they've also tested missiles 30 times more powerful than a typical anti-tank weapon. And all of this has been done and proven to keep the cast intact. I currently live within 50 miles of three nuclear power plants, as I'm sure many of you do. I plan to remain there, plan to get married there, I plan to raise my family there, and I have the utmost confidence that my future family and I will live in a safe and happy community even with these nuclear power plants, enhanced by these nuclear power plants. I have confidence in the draft GEIS and I would urge the NRC to adopt the rule. Thank you all for your time. Thank you. We'll have to move on. We'll go to Tina Seestrom.
My name is Rob McCollum and I work for the Nuclear Energy Institute, the industry's trade association based out of Washington.
Tess? Yes.
Oh, my name is Rob McCollum and I work for the Nuclear Energy Institute based out of Washington, DC, where I've spent the last 15 years of my career working on nuclear issues, including the Yucca Mountain, and most specifically, the Yucca Mountain Repository. But today, I can say it's good to be back in Chicago because before I went to Washington to work on this issue because I believe it's important, I spent a good portion of my life in this area, working in Argyle National Laboratory, working for the Department of Energy, working at a couple of excellent nuclear plants. I'm very familiar with what Illinois is capable of in the area of nuclear management and winter spent fuel management. I'm very familiar with the world-class expertise that exists in this area. Illinois has 50 years of experience managing spent nuclear fuel and has done so safely and I believe that's only going to get better. Illinois has loaded 120 casks safely stored in the pools for 50 years, including the only independent spent fuel storage installation that is a pool in the GE Morris Facility, which was recently relicensed, a very tough, highly scrupulous process, like all NRC processes. And this is an example. A lot has been said here tonight about speculation. A lot of it flat out untrue, but 4.3 million tons of nitrogen oxide in the air, we know what that does. Very real health effects are attributable to air pollution. I want to talk about two things specifically that you mentioned a lot tonight: safety culture and climate change. I see these things becoming intertwined. Safety culture is not about rhetoric, it's not about anecdotes, it's not about speculation. It's about facts. It's about analysis, it's about questioning the facts and doing more analysis. This is what nuclear engineers do, this is why these young people who've got up here so confident, this is why we've achieved the safety record we have. A lot of young people today are looking at the facts about climate change. They're asking the hard questions. They're deciding to become nuclear engineers. If we were to turn our backs on nuclear energy, is the best weapon we have against climate change? Yes, solar should play a role, yes, wind should play a role, but only nuclear can give you carbon-3 baseload large-scale electricity generation. If we were to turn our backs on our biggest weapon against climate change, I would question the safety culture of our nation, but I know we won't do that. I'm starting to see how, when I come back to Illinois, so many young people getting into this business and letting their safety culture grow without that and in our nation in the right direction. Now, I could get up here and tell you how Fremont Island didn't hurt anybody, how I attacked Chernobyl, or even Fukushima could happen in this country, but I won't do that, because safety culture, my safety culture, won't let me. Safety culture learns. For all we've achieved, for all the record of safety, I believe it's going to get better. I believe the young people are going to do better. It's $26 billion in the nuclear waste fund. The courts that have asked NRC to do this have also asked NRC to restart the Yucca Mountain licensing process, and they're also looking at what the Department of Energy's doing with that money. Our government works, and I really am gratified, not by just hearing my friends and supporters out here, but all the commentary, all the discussion. This is our process at work. This is us asking questions. I'm confident NRC will come up with the answers. I look forward to the final questions. I support this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And after Tina, we'll go to Sherry Katz.
I'm Tina Seestrom, and here representing myself and Ellen Credell, both of Nuclear Energy Information Service. We know that you represent the industry and not the consumer or the people of the Earth. We feel electric rate payers don't need or want to be at great risk due to the habits of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. Please change your ways. Nuclear is not the way to go while we have geothermal, solar, and wind, and who knows what else. Waste confidence? I have no waste confidence.
Thank you. Is Sherry Katz here? Sherry?
She has to leave.
Okay. I just want to remind you real quickly that you can still submit comments online. I know we're having a cut time short, and I'm very sorry that we have to do that to get through everybody, but you can still submit comments online, or by email, or in writing, there's many other ways to comment. And also, if everyone could please check their cell phones real quick and make sure that they're off.
How many more?
Um, I have about 15 left.
Oh, no.
For our next speakers, let's go to Leanne Caston, Stephanie Belinko, and Lisa Donovan. I'm sorry, I do not have Lisa Donovan to speak, sorry. This is Leanne.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Leanne Caston. I am a journalist and author. I'm going to tell you for a second about my breast cancer book. Two elements create nuclear, create breast cancer. I won't go into the first. The second is nuclear radiation. I can only quickly tell you that after 10 years, the women in Nanisagi developed a mass of breast cancer. It's a long-term effect. It doesn't immediately pop up. You will see it eventually if you have been exposed over a period of time. Therefore, I'm going to start out by telling you this is an issue of madness, dealing with a dangerous technology, dangerous, not understanding the words "safe." It isn't. It's a dangerous technology that costs way too much, that threatens the lives of thousands of people, that generates poisons even in low-level emissions, that generates lies and false statements to lull the public into their sense of safety as a clean technology, and nuclear power is not. That we lull ourselves into denial to justify our cool homes while corporate executives pay home their salaries and while millions and millions of dollars are invested in this technology, while PR firms promote this technology, and frankly, it's become a mad world. Anytime we think it's okay to allow some exposure to radiation through accidents, which are many, or any releases, and anytime someone is harmed, that's evil. Let's deal with that. After Chernobyl, I heard the Russian equivalent of the EPA come to America to warn us about the dangers, the dangers of nuclear radiation. He talked about the thousands of people who were harmed and died, thousands. He finally actually admitted that there were millions, and he also admitted the Russian government lied. They didn't want to admit this, they were avoiding it, and he died two years later. He was involved with cleanup. No human life is expendable or collateral damage. No one. Accidents will happen, no one must deny this. How can anyone justify harming just one human being when less toxic or unsustainable technology is available? This whole mindset is morally indefensible. If I take a gun and randomly shoot bullets into a crowd, I'd be called insane, criminal, and evil. This technology is no less. Let's just stop making the waste.
Thank you, Leanne. Next, we'll go to Stephanie Belinko.
My name is Stephanie Belinko. My name is Stephanie Belinko, and I am part of the Near West Citizens for Peace and Justice. That group is part of a larger group, the Illinois Coalition for Peace, Justice, and Environment. Illinois is not a waste dump. We don't want any more high-level radioactive waste coming to or through Illinois. Nuclear waste is still a problem without a solution. No technology has been proven capable of containing radioactive waste for the hundreds of thousands of years necessary to protect the environment. Debates continue over whether it is even possible to do so, but unfortunately, the United States has failed even to identify a viable site for a nuclear waste repository despite billions of dollars and a federal mandate to do so. Mass transportation of nuclear waste is unsafe. The sheer volume of nuclear waste will require thousands of shipments on our roads, rails, and waterways. Nationwide, there is well over 8,000 tons of spent nuclear fuel. With plutonium, that will remain toxic for 240,000 years. Other elements in irradiated fuel will be dangerously radioactive for even longer. No storage facility has been designed that can contain radioactive waste for such periods. Since spent nuclear fuel contains large quantities of fissile fuel or fissile material, that can be used to make nuclear weapons, so it also must be safeguarded to prevent death. Proponents of nuclear power treat the radioactive waste as a minor matter. It is not. A nuclear fission reactor produces waste so lethal that it has to be isolated from the rest of existence for a quarter of a million years. In theory, containing high-level waste is possible. In practice, Murphy's Law is the safer guide. In the real world, it is certain that sooner or later, things go wrong. By accident or cousiness of nature, that waste is going to leak into the biosphere. And once that happens, anyone, and anything that comes into contact with even a few milligrams of it will suffer a miserable death. The more nuclear power we generate now, the more of this ghastly gift will be stockpiling for the people of the far future. A basic concept of morality is that each of us ought to leave the world a better place for those who come after us. If we know better, we ought to do better. One of the essential boundaries of appropriate tech is the boundary between the kinds of matter you can change with tools you have on hand and the kind you can't. And if you can't change it into something same, it's a bad idea to produce it in the first place. It really is that simple. If you can't transform it, don't produce it. Radioactivity from atomic power will pose a threat to life on the Earth for the next million years. We are confident that NRC and the waste generators can never contain this waste for as long as it poses a hazard. But to continue making more of it is not just insane. It is irresponsible and should be illegal. NRC must abandon its waste confidence policy and stop using it to license nuclear power plants. There is no safe dose of radiation, and to pursue licensing it on the base of waste confidence is immoral. And now I'm speaking as a citizen of...
I need you to go ahead and wrap up, please.
For our children's future, no more nuclear power. These are my grandchildren.
Thanks for this. We'll go to Joyce Good, Claire Tobin, and Robert Schwartz. Is Joyce still here?
Yes, she's still here. I don't want to save her, but I have to.
We'll go to Joyce Good.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for coming, everyone. Thank you so much for talking. I just want to clarify a few things that gentlemen came up and said he has safety concerns and facts. Well, one of the facts that are his safety concerns is Three Mile Island, and I have a very conservative accountant who, in every way, is very conservative, but when it comes to Three Mile Island, he shakes his head and he hates nuclear. Why? Because his relatives are there, and they're dying. That is fact. That is not safety concern. That's fact. Please say it as it is. My next-door neighbor, a young man who gets sick constantly, a beautiful young man, at most, he's in his early 30s, he was a victim of Chernobyl. He lived in Poland. He constantly gets ill. He does not know how to solve it. That is not a safety feature. That's a fact, and that's a fact we have to look at, and we have to look starkly at it. Now, the young lady who came up from Exelon, all the people from Exelon, thank you, you're very nice, I like you, I'm sorry to work for Exelon, and I'm glad your organization and company provides you with experiences that you feel make things safe. Exelon has been cited many times for doing wrong things, so don't forget that, but they have never put you in a situation with a tornado, or a typhoon, or an earthquake. How about that for pools of radioactive waste? You've never experienced that, so you really can't stand up and say confidently, "They have done everything, and I do feel safe." And lastly, I'd like to say, 60 years from now, you're going to have a repository? That is totally irresponsible. A repository should be now. And the other part that should be now, to reiterate what my good friends have said, is stop producing this highly dangerous waste. We are people. We want to live. Give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the question.
Hi, I'm Claire Tobin, and I'm here as a mother and a grandmother, and someone who is really very concerned about the actions that are taken by our government. We want to believe that you all represent us and represent our interests, but the history of the nuclear age is not like that. It started off with a bomb, and that is more than 60 years ago. And then it was sold as a peaceful way of getting, you know, nuclear energy, that it was a peaceful thing, but it's still a horrible, toxic, dangerous process. And if we haven't found a solution to the waste after 60 years, what confidence do you have that we will have the option to solve it now? No, we don't. It's just like the government. Once it starts on one direction, it's so difficult to change it. And all the subsidies that you're getting for it, why can't we put those subsidies into good renewable energy? All that money, we could be free, and we could be healthy, and we could be safe, and so with our children. And for you young people there working, I would implore you to read this book, Full Body Burden, by Kristin Iverson, who worked in the 60s and 70s in Rocky Mountain Flats, or whatever you call that dump. And the number of commissions, and the secrecy, and the illnesses, and the cover-up, and all of the hearings that were heard and that went nowhere. And she, her life is a testimony, and all the people who were sick and who got ill, you gotta wake up and read those, and let us be courageous, and do what we need to do, and is move away from nuclear forever. It's dead.
Next speaker is Robert Schwartz, followed by Fran Seal. I apologize if I mispronounced that, I'm having a hard time reading some of the writing, and also Bridget Rorham.
I'm Robert Schwartz, and I do have confidence in the NRC's rulemaking and policies and procedures. I reside at, well, with this crowd, I don't think I'm going to tell you where I reside at. But as a crow flies, I live eight miles downwind of Dresden Nuclear Power Plant, and there's nuclear spent fuel storage casks there and have been there for years, and my jaw is on the wayward shut, and I haven't lost any teeth either. I feel safe with the fuel restored safely and not a threat to my safety or my family's. And I live downwind of the casks, and I represent lawmakers to be well with the casks. I have witnessed the fuel being put into the casks, I have witnessed the welding of the casks, and I witnessed the inner cask being put in the outer cask, and I witnessed the two feet of concrete, the neutron-absorbed concrete, poured around the inner casks. I feel safe with the fuel being stored safely and not a threat to my safety or my family's. And I live downwind of the casks. And I represent the regulators and we love the casks. I have witnessed the fuel being put into the casks. I have witnessed the welding of the casks. And I witnessed the inner cast being put in the outer cast. And I witnessed the two feet of concrete, the neutron-absorbing concrete, poured around the inner casks and the outer lip welded on. I have all the confidence that the NRC's design and engineering will keep the fuel safely stored. The welding criteria is of the most stringent standards. Each inch is videotaped and reviewed. The cast is made of neutron-absorbing material. I have confidence in the NRC's expertise to continue to develop policies and procedures to protect us as they have done in the past. And I'm not moving. And I challenge a previous speaker who contested the safety of the cast, the building of the cast in the parking lot after this meeting. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Fran.
Exhausting meeting, Harrison. If you still have left. I'm Dr. Francine Sella. And I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Algen area. And I'm also the issue senator for fracking for the League of Women Voters of Illinois. The League, although the League opposes increased reliance on nuclear fission, it recognizes its place in the nation's energy mix. And the speech that I came here to give, I'm not going to give partly because a lot of the points have already been covered. But also because I'm realizing that really, the issue here is that what we're looking at is confidence in the NRC. And regardless of what... I am so happy to hear about the culture of safety that is in place in the existing plants. And but regardless of what efforts are being made within the plants by all you people who are working there and doing such a fine job, and I trust that you are all very capable. If the structural integrity of the plant is not sound, then we're... suck, right? And the only ones that comes out there are NRC. They are the agency that is responsible for addressing safety problems in nuclear plants. So local and state agencies can monitor them. The plants, yeah, can identify problems. But the NRC is basically designated by the federal government as responsible agent for correcting problems or seeing the problems are corrected. And there is a history that they have always done that. Several decades ago, the government determined that nuclear plants in seismic zones presented specific increased risks. So in 1996, the NRC required that new reactors built in seismic areas be designed with protections against the hazards that earthquakes present. It took almost nine years, however, for the NRC to begin assessing the potential risk at existing reactors that were already operating in seismic areas. In 2005, NRC identified its 27 most vulnerable reactors. Two of these are in Illinois, the two Dresden units. And eight years later, there still has not been any corrective action on those. You know, in this world where, you know, and I don't think anybody in the room disagrees that there is a high risk of nuclear fission. It's like every conceivable effort has to be made to assure that absolutely nothing goes wrong. The feds have designated the authority for the safety of our nation's nuclear plants exclusively to the NRC. All right? There is some questions about their track record of doing that. So regardless of how hard you're working in these plants, there's questions, there's serious questions.
Can we get you to go ahead and finish up?
Okay. So the League does not have confidence in the NRC's waste competence, draft, generic, environmental, safety thing. And the document should be thoroughly revised on the basis of an objective review of scientific data, which includes NRC's own performance data and critical public data. And I have been observing that you differentially are kind of applying. I know we're at the end of the evening now, but I have been noticing differences in the way that people operate.
And our next speaker is Bridget Roarum, followed by William Jones.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Seig. I'm Bridget Roarum. The nuclear industry and the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, formerly the Atomic Energy Commission, have had nearly 60 years to come up with a permanent solution for nuclear waste, especially spent nuclear fuel generated by nuclear power plants. I've been involved in nuclear issues to a greater or lesser extent for more than half that time. Some 34 or 35 years ago, I was in a meeting similar to this one. Though whether it was called by Commonwealth Edison or the agency set up to oversee and regulate it, I cannot remember. One person commenting made mention of all the methods he knew under consideration for long-term disposal of high-level nuclear waste, shoot it into space, buried in salt mines, et cetera. Someone from either the NRC or ComEd responded that "We have high hopes currently for the VDH concept." A year or so later, I received from the NRC a large book addressing the concerns about high-level nuclear waste. This was in the wake of the accident at Three Mile Island. And I assume that every citizen intervening in a licensing procedure or otherwise involved in the nuclear issue received such a copy. Therein, I discovered exactly what VDH meant, a very deep hole. The industry and its watchdog have tried to convince the public for half a century that a solution is on the horizon. They have used jargon and acronyms to sound more authoritative and knowledgeable on the subject than they really are. And nuclear waste continues building up. So nuclear fuel, spent fuel, is now stored in dry casks at nuclear plants while they work on the problem. It is as simple as this. Everything leaks eventually. Everything leaks. And nuclear matter, when it leaks, contaminates that which contains it and everything far, far beyond. Leakage cannot be controlled or contained. Enough. Stop making nuclear waste. There are better, safer, cheaper ways to supply our energy needs. How much will it cost to contain, watch over, move, clean up from leakage for hundreds or thousands of years? Enough. Everything, everything leaks.
Let's next go to Deborah Michaud, followed by Jeffrey Schrammick and Teri Gallagher.
My name is Deborah Michaud. I'm a citizen and business owner. And thank you for this opportunity to speak. Yet, for the record, I want to mention that the only way I found about this meeting was just having friends who are in environmental organizations. So I don't believe that this was widely announced. And the fact that there's no mainstream media here is evidence of that. At this time, there are no facilities for permanent storage of high-level radioactive waste. Since the only way radioactive waste has finally become harmless is through decay, which for some isotopes contained in high-level waste can take hundreds of thousands of years. The waste must be stored in a way that provides adequate protection for very long times. But at this time, there are no facilities for permanent storage. That actually comes from the NRC website. So the industry, the industry folks and the politicians who spoke tonight and who stand to personally gain from nuclear power through their paychecks and other issues are talking about the next 50, 100 years. And even that, they cannot predict what is the future of, as Fukushima has taught us. So my question, based on the NRC's own figure, I have a bunch of them, actually. Does the NRC have a plan for the next 250,000 years for nuclear waste storage, management, and disaster response? Does the NRC have a financial plan to manage nuclear waste for 250,000 years? Is the NRC prepared to fund potential disasters for the next 250,000 years? Does the NRC feel confident that it has taken all factors of climate change into its 250,000-year plan, which would include predicted water shortages, superstorms, increased flooding and droughts? Has the NRC planned for the likely population explosion over the next few hundred years? Considering how fracking has been proven by the USGS to induce earthquakes in previously inactive faults, has the NRC figured a way to predict that future generations won't be fracking in the region of nuclear waste storage? Can the NRC prove that humans will be in existence in 50,000, 100,000, 200,000 years to manage this waste? The problem with nuclear, says Hubert Reeves, an astrophysicist, is that it mortgages the future. Between the time you launch a reactor plant and the time you dismantle it, more than a century can go by. Has a political regime been able to last more than a century? There are very few of them in history. We can't talk about political stability on the scale of 1,000 years. Imagine the Egyptians had stored nuclear waste. Who would manage it today? It's outrageous to think we can manage the future in such times as these when we look at the history of mankind and all its changes and upheavals. It's totally outrageous, end quote. Can the NRC morally defend its position of bequeathing the problem of radioactive waste for thousands of years? The hubris we have as humans to leave this legacy of waste for 6,000 human generations, for a single generation's comfort? It is immoral and arrogant. And I have no confidence that the NRC represents the interest of the future of life on this planet. Thank you.
Is Jeffrey here? And we'll go to Teri Gallagher.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Dr. Teri Gallagher. I'm a public theologian with the Ministry of a Sustainable Earth. And first of all, I want to express my gratitude that you all stuck through this, this long. You had this kind of a conversation to kind of explore where we're at and where we're going. I appreciate the NRC offering this and inviting us to discuss. You know, as a theologian, I often remark it's interesting that every major world religion has some form of the global role. Every single major world religion has some form of "Don't do unto others what you would not do unto yourselves." There's something about that that just resonates with our humanity that we're called to care for others. That we're called to care beyond short-term economics. We're called to care for future. So I'm here to speak for future. And I'm here to tell you, it's unethical to require future generations to handle the waste of their generation. It's unethical to put this burden on future generations. We wouldn't want it done to us. Where do we get off thinking that we have the right to do it to others? So the short-term approach to handling nuclear waste is unethical. It's not viable. If we're going to have nuclear power, then we need to be honest and face it and handle it within our generation. The answer is, we haven't found a way to deliver it. So until we do, we need to stop it. It's unethical to put our generation under future generations. It's in our humanity. We're addicted to cheap fossil fuel and cheap power. We need to look beyond short-term economics. We need to think about what is truly human about us and what we would want future generations to have to bear because we might have to like some. There's other ways to do it. Thanks for having us.
Next, we have Margaret Aguilar. Margaret? Followed with Evan Craig.
Some people have not been able to challenge their inner... or channel their inner Tina Turner here, but I'm going to give it a shot. My name is Margaret Aguilar. I've lived in Chicago since 1981. I come from Denver, where we had dealt with Rocky Flats or didn't deal with it. And I just want to give some numbers. And some people have given them already. And one is the 240,000 years that we're talking about when plutonium degenerates to the point that it does impose a significant threat. And the other is how old is the human homo sapiens as a species? And that's probably, that was jacked up from 150 million to about 200 million. And it may go a little higher, but in fact, this stuff is going to be around and be very dangerous longer than we've been a species on this earth. The second number I would like to tell you is a sample size. The engineer that was here that said that she was a sample of one and she had three daughters, that makes it a sample of four. That's not considered scientific evidence to any real scientist who's doing any real research on the effects of nuclear energy. People have put in pieces and bits, kind of thrown away things, like Yucca Mountain. I suspect many people here realize that Yucca Mountain was chose for political rather than scientific reasons. The site has been subject to two earthquakes in the last 15 years, one of which partially destroyed the building that was built on there. So it's really not a seismically stable area to be a real resource to store or be a real storage thing. I guess I'm obviously demonstrating the fact that I have no confidence in the waste competence. And that as a person who's lived in this kind of nuclear necklace of 11 nuclear power plant sites, I am feeling... I really feel threatened by the planned releases of nuclear gases, by the millions of gallons of tritium-contaminated water that was released into the Kankakee River and into groundwater running Kankakee from Brooklyn. And for all of the other kinds of oopsies that were not acknowledged by the plants, by Exelon and by other companies that ran nuclear power plants. And so, and the NRC hasn't seemed to have done a really good job of protecting us from this. And so, as a mom and a potential grandma and a person who lives here and pays taxes and just retired and is working as a nurse for 40 years, you know, I object.
So I had plenty of time to craft my comments. So my name is Evan Craig. I'm an engineer and a volunteer with the Sierra Club. I remember adults telling me in fourth grade that I should hide under my desk to protect myself from nuclear fallout. In eighth grade, I didn't understand yet. And I built a model of a nuclear reactor as a science fair project. It wasn't until I started to build a working model that the dangers of nuclear energy became clear. that the dangers of nuclear energy became clear to me. While earning my engineering degree, I learned that no accelerated test is valid without data from a non-accelerated test. I'm concerned that live test data for existing plants in Illinois is not available, and that this data is only now being generated as the licenses for these plants are extended. Without it, we're guessing. In the late 80s, I worked for a company that designed and built control valves. The valves designed by my older colleagues for the nuclear industry were already antiquated, and the redundancy in the designs struck me as Rube Goldberg embarrassments to satisfy bureaucratic requirements to make a fundamentally dangerous process appear safe. Perhaps the most alarming evidence I have seen convincing me to oppose this GEIS is the excessive confidence demonstrated by the comments of some of the enthusiastic employees here tonight. None have broken yet is an unsafe approach to terrestrial nuclear power, and it ignores basic engineering discipline. I'd be less concerned if more had a healthy fear. I find the term generic environmental an oxymoron. Environment is the essence of site variability. So I find the proposition absurd rejecting any GEIS for nuclear waste. Without a waste solution, like everybody else has said, I oppose creation of more nuclear waste. I see few in this room who will be around to fulfill the promises to replace casks in 60 or 100 years, let alone 250,000 years. I've seen promises to protect public. The public abandoned in the face of extreme events, and the increasingly extreme weather events we can expect to occur more frequently than climate destruction gives me pause. NRC should stop jeopardizing future citizens without their consent, and should not be allowed to issue new licenses or extensions. Thank you.[740.42][740.42][applause]
Carol Stark, Carly Grace, and Saman Shafi. Okay, thank you. So Carly Grace, is Carly?
I'm Carly Grace, and I live in Tinley Park. But I'm a citizen of this planet. And there's been a lot said, and the longer I've listened, the more absurd all of it sounds. I can't believe that we even have this discussion. Period. Why are we even having this discussion? It's a... I invite everyone that works at Exelon and any other nuclear regulation and mission to go pluck themselves down right now in Fukushima. I want you to be first responders there right now. I want your bills to be paid off so that you can live there. I want your wives who are pregnant to be brought back there so that they can have a free house. I want you all to have a diaper counter and have all your food processed. I want you to start eating the tuna off the west coast that is now highly radioactive. I want you to be involved because what you do, you do with great care. You take safety to the fact that you've got to fly planes into your buildings because what you have, I don't care what the task looks like, how well it's built, within it is death. Chicago originated this, and in 70 years, they haven't been able to figure out how to neutralize or put this back into the bottle. I don't need to spout facts. I don't need to hear either science facts. It's truth that it's death. And I don't care if someone says, "Well, people are going to have to do without their TVs." You're darn right you may have to do without some stuff. It's either that or a plant. I don't know about you, I don't have kids. Do you have kids? Do you have grandchildren? I have me, and I've lived a good life, and I'm grateful for that. But we are depriving the future. When the Pacific is already trashed, it's not a bathtub. Who's going to be drinking that water? Who's going to surf in it? Who's going to fish in it? I want this safety to go right to the heart of it. Go back and look in Chernobyl. Go back to Three Mile Island and see that damage. There is moral integrity that is missing, and this shouldn't even be a conversation because this shouldn't even have to be on the board for a discussion. The water resources that are going to be so very terribly at risk that it takes to keep anything cooled, all right, is it going to be, "Let's cool the plant or let's have some water to drink?" All you have to do is look at what happens in the Philippines when you have people without water. And you can be smug and laugh, then I want you to sign up right now and go to Fukushima. Those of you who have been sitting here laughing and just chonking at this need to be doing some soul searching while you still have a soul left, while there is a planet for us to inhabit. There isn't a Plan B, and you can only go underground for so many years if you think you've got that kind of self-repository filled with food. You come up, and there won't be anything. I do not support and have absolutely no confidence, and when there was a slight mishap here, I got involved because I called the governors, I called the senators. They didn't know what had happened. I called, and they said, "Talk to the DOE." "The DOE says you've got to talk to emergency management." They have no clue. I did not like have people just pretend that I was some stupid idiot. I am not, and neither is the rest of this plant.
Thank you, thank you, Carly.[1022.02][1022.02][applause] Saman Shafi here? Everly Walter?
Well, I'm Everly Walter, and I live in the member groups. Some of you are in the state groups. I'm in GNEIS, CAO, and West suburban Coalition for Peace and Justice. All of you, I want to thank for your comments. I hope they are heard, not just pushed aside. I don't want this to be shown. And all of you lovely people who work for the industry, I can appreciate that you would support the industry. But I think it is a statement of where we are at that almost everyone, maybe one person, who has testified on behalf of this and on behalf of the NRC are with the industry. Now that should tell us something. That should tell us that they are not speaking for the public, and that those people who are here, who have spoken before me, who are incredibly knowledgeable, are the ones that are speaking in facts, not claims, but facts. And I think that's what we should listen to. And I want to quote, although there's a lot that could be said, a lot has already been said, "What it needs to be is taken to heart." And I urge those members of the NRC to remind themselves that they also are people, and that their mission is to serve the people of this country and beyond that of the planet, and not the business. Let's repeat that. They are there to serve the people. Let us remind them of that. And if they do not serve the people, they are betraying their job, they are betraying their country, and they are betraying their planet. And let us remind ourselves that this technology, which is being so touted by some of the members as so safe, has demonstrably been proven unsafe. And in addition to that, it is an old technology, isn't it? Isn't it time we really look and say, "Hey, let's move into the 21st century. Let's decrease our consumption. Let's not be hicks about how much energy we use or waste. Let's turn to renewables because we can." And all of the engineers and all of the safety people, you can have a marvelous career, a green career in solar, in geothermal, in all the kinds of even cold fusion, all these incredible things and discoveries that have been suppressed. We have a future to look for. Let's turn our back on a technology that is dangerous and is poisoning people and the planet, and let's move to the future. The nuclear industry has gotten millions, billions of dollars of US debt payers. Let's put that into renewables. Let's look to the future. Thank you.[1256.85][1256.85][applause]
I think everybody who spoke tonight spent a long night. I would rather not be here myself. You can't hear me?
No.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I'd rather be at home doing other things, enjoying my family. I feel for the last year, I have been in places where I didn't want to be. I've been out with Pratt Free. I'd rather not be dealing with energy issues. I guess it would be a fairy tale to me if we would proceed with clean, green energy. I'm talking about wind, solar, geothermal. For my children, I would be out there every day working for free. These are the words I've heard tonight. Stepping stone, that was from Dunlop. A stepping stone to wear. We would have planned for disposal, except for the politics. Well, that's the same thing with fracking. It's a stepping stone, and except for the politics, we would have better regulations. Talk about regulations. Jerry Beck said, he's from the Illinois Manufacturers Association, "We have to consider the impact of regulations on the economy." Well, we have very, I don't know that much about this, except it's poison. That's what I know, and that's why I'm here tonight. We have very weak regulations for fracking. That I do know. And we call them the best in the country. Well, this is the same. We might have the best in the world, but it's still poison. We're dealing with a toxic waste that has to be carefully dealt with. Mr. Gallagher is right. We're giving it to children. I don't have grandchildren, and I may never, and I don't really want them. I don't tell my daughters that. I don't. The last thing I want to say is Tom Moos said, "Nuclear gives us quality of life, an economic well-being." I would like to think that the quality of my life was not hurting other people, not causing climate change, and that my economic well-being was just part of a world where I'm living, innocent people, and we're not antichists. You know, throats. I mean, we're in wars. We don't need to do this. We just don't. And it's opposite of the same thing that we talk about. Our food, our water, this is all the same fight that I'm very sorry for.[1473.02][1473.02][applause] Do we still have Frank Costanza? Frank Costanza, and then Hannah Welch? Is Hannah here?
I'm going to be very brief. This is all energy to me. I've been reading about energy and nuclear for a while, but I'm certainly no authority on it. But I can't have any confidence in this idea the NRC has, mainly for the reason that even though people work really hard and do a good job, human beings aren't infallible. And it doesn't seem like it's all up to us. We don't have everything under control that we think we have under control. And it's getting less likely to be able to do that in the future. So I think the only thing this would do would perpetuate something that we can't live with anymore, never could live with, but certainly can't live with more of it. I don't like the effects of handling people who are relying on it, but I think there's just no other choice. So that's pretty much all. I think we have to stop doing it, and I don't know the solution to all that. The only non-detrimental source of energy that we have, I think, is photosynthesis. We've seemed to have looked beyond that for some reason, even though it seems to be a real system. So I don't think I should say anything else because I'm tired and I just care for one else. Thank you.[1600.94][1600.94][applause]
Is Hannah here? That concludes the list of people that I had signed up to speak. Is there anyone who didn't already get a chance to speak that wanted to come up and your name wasn't on the list?
Hi. My name is Donna Bluestein, and I hope I'm ever going to fall to respond to a nuclear accident, a radiological incident. I hope that I will never have to go, I hope that I'll never be woken up or called at any time to go, "Possibility." We have to take responsibility for the mess we already have. I'm sure there are many, many jobs for all you bright young people who are working in the industry to take care of what's already been created. And I ask that we all put our heads together to search for the better solutions for the rest of us, for all of us, and for all time. And I hope that, I hope that God helps us to solve the problems that we've already created, and I hope we find better solutions, all working together.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else? Unfortunately, we can't go to seconds, but thank you so much for coming and for making your comments. And we want to go ahead and close the meeting tonight with a brief statement by Dr. Keith McConnell, the director of the conference. Oh, I'm so sorry, missed you.
My name's... Hello, looking at you. My name's Mike Countess, and I'm with Chicago Independent Media. I just want to address the fact that there's no mainstream media reporters here covering this story. You would think that this would be on the front page of every newspaper. We're talking about an issue that's going to affect people for perhaps hundreds of thousands of years. Things that are happening right now at this conference, and yet almost nobody has known about it. And on top of that, even though no one has gotten the word out, I think it's worth noting that there's an overwhelming majority of support here for people who are against nuclear waste, containing this nuclear issue. The only people that have really shown up here are representing the industry that are in favor. They all have a bias because they're getting They all have a bias because they're getting paid. There's a profit motive there, pretty much humanistically. All the people who are not getting any money are against this proposition. I think that should be stated for the record. As a person, I think that the title of this, "Waste Confidence," is very misleading. That's kind of an Orwellian title, so that no one can really understand what's happening right here. We're talking about nuclear waste dumping. If you're not putting that in the terms it is, no one's gonna know what you're talking about, and people aren't gonna come out and express themselves. So I think that just the title itself shows a certain lack of transparency that we need to look at. How can we have confidence in the system when they're using words like "waste confidence"? We need to have a very descriptive title of what's going on so people can have a real understanding, and then we can have an honest debate. Furthermore, I'd like to say that I think it's a bad idea. We can't put this burden on other generations. It can't be a burden for people 250,000 years down the line. That's just totally irresponsible, immoral, unethical. You know, people said brilliantly that, you know, for one generation's worth of energy consumption, for creating a lifelong problem for hundreds of thousands of years. Human civilization is not that long. I believe Dever mentioned, like, what if the Egyptians were using nuclear waste? Would you want to be responsible for maintaining that waste disposal in modern times, and for generations and generations to come? I think if you do the math and you realize that it's not economically efficient, it's not safe, it's not wise, we need to take that money and we need to invest it into renewable energy, renewable resources, that's the way to go for the future.
Okay, now we'll go to Dr. McConnell for his closing remarks. Thanks, everybody, for coming this evening.
Well, thanks, everyone. Thanks for your participation, and thanks for coming. I know it takes an effort to come out, particularly on a whole night. And also, thanks for staying within the three-minute time. A three-minute time that really helps everybody in terms of allowing everybody to speak. So thanks again, and we'll close the meeting. Good night.